Which one am I here?
Good evening, residents, staffs, applicants, and planning commissioners. We, the regular meeting of the planning commission is called to order for March 23rd, 2021, at about 7:12 PM today. And I'm gonna go through some of the items today. We're gonna go through moment of silence, then a pledge allegiance, and then approval minutes. So, but before that, I know this is a continuations from the last meeting. And since this is a continuing public hearing item, tonight, we will hear only from those who have not already voiced their concerns or opinions of the project. And we will hear testimony on the proposed three changes to the project. And the three changes are, give me one sec. Also, staff will confirm to see if you spoke last week or not. Give me one sec. The three changes are... Give me one sec. Come on. Let me, let me go through the three changes first. So again, this is the planning commission meeting that was continuing for March 9th. And if you spoken the last time, we will not hear from you. But if you want to add something new, we will hear from you with the addition of the, also the three changes as well. So, changes is number... The CLA has been revised to require a seven-feet minimum height block wall with landscape buffering screen required to be installed in front of the wall in the form of shrubs, trees, or vines. And then, number 18, this, the CLA has been revised to require a seven-foot-tall minimum height block wall along the east, west, and north property lines to preserve the property of adjacent neighbors and to discourage individual from climbing the wall. The last and the third item is the down payment assistance program has been renamed Home Ownership Assistant Program and has been revised to be made available only to low or moderate-income individual and families. So those are the three changes. So it's just in case, if you're here from the last meeting and you spoke already, we will not hear from you. But if you have something new to add or talk about these three changes, please submit a card to Renee and the staff will, will call when the public meeting is at that time.
And, and Madam Chair, can the city attorney explain why, why that is regarding the public speakers?
Yes, when we get to there, then the, I'll counsel can explain that.
Right.
So I'm gonna go through the opening of the meeting first. So as of March 4th, 2020, the governor proclaimed that there is a pandemic. So since then, we have changed the meeting format a little bit. So I'm just gonna summarize it from the last meeting also. If you cannot attend, or if you are here, if you're sick or have a fever, what have you, please stay home. If you are here, please stay six foot away. And also, you know, you have some of the fever symptom, you know, please stay away from everyone and wear your mask. The other thing is that there are also, you can watch us via YouTube. We also have the Zoom, you can call in and staff, you know, could join us that way as well. Just like our plan, one of our planning commissioner tonight, she's unable to make it, but she is on Zoom meeting and she is also here as well. So... Okay, so, hold on. Public comments and addressing the commission. Any person wishing to address the planning commission on any matter listed on the agenda and on any item other, other matter within their jurisdiction is asked to complete a speaker card that is provided on the speaker podium and submit the card to a planning department staff. And the speaker card, it's a pink one that the staff have. Please identify on the speaker and whether you are speaking on an agenda item or non-agenda item. Request to speak on non-agenda items will be heard during oral communication before the public hearing section of the agenda. Oral communications are limited to only 30 minutes. Generally, comments are limited to five minutes per speaker unless further time is granted by the chairperson. Chairperson may also, at his or her discretion, further limit the time of each speaker in order to accommodate a large number of speakers and to ensure that the business of the planning commission is effectively conducted. Any testimony or comments regarding the matters at four public hearing will be heard during the public hearing for that item. And... So please join me for a moment of silence and a pledge allegiance and then we'll call. Thank you. And please join Commissioner Shelby Williams with a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paulina, we'll call, please.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Becerra?
We're verifying to see if Commissioner Becerra is, is actually on the Zoom.
We'll let you know if she gets on the meeting.
Thank you.
And Chair Hang?
Here. And we're gonna have approval minutes. Does anyone have any changes submitted of March 9th, 2021? Hearing none, the meetings of March 9th, 2021 are approved as submitted. Okay, and before the oral, oral communication starts, city attorney, can you please help answer our Commissioner, Commissioner Gutierrez's question earlier?
Yes, good evening, Russell Hildebrand, deputy city attorney. Okay. Anyone help? Can you hear me now? How about this one? Okay. I, Russell Hildebrand, deputy city attorney. The question raised was about seemingly restricting people from speaking again tonight. And it's all a matter of fairness. These, there's an opportunity for everyone to have five minutes to say what they would like to say either for or against or, or to comment on this project. And allow another, another bite at the apple, so to speak, is just not, is just not in the interest of fairness. If this is your first time at the meeting, you're only going to get five minutes. You're not going to get a, a double opportunity. So those who have given the commission their comments, we did make three changes regarding the wall height, the landscaping, the, the climbing vines on the walls. And then also, there was desire to not have a limitation on the homeowner assistance program citing to only public employees. So that limitation has been removed. So those items are new for tonight. And if anyone would like to comment on them, even though you've commented generally on the project before, if you have some specific comments on those topics, those would be welcome.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And, let's see, do we have any oral communications? Would anyone like to speak to the commission on any item that is not on tonight's agenda? Do we have anyone on Zoom? Renee?
Yes, we have a total of 12 participants.
Will they be speaking on non-agenda items or?
No, none of them expressed that.
They're all?
None of them have expressed that they will be speaking on non-agenda items.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to public hearing. Tonight, we are continuing a public hearing for precise plan 20-01, tentative tract map 83134, general plan amendment number 20-01, zone change number 20-02, and tree permit number 20, or tree permit number 20-14. Again, since the, we had answered some of the questions already, if you spoke, this is a continuation, so it just continued from the last week as if we just continue on. So you spoke last week and you don't really get another chance to speak, but if you speak on all the three items that I read earlier, then you can please come up and to the podium and speak about the three changes that we made. Public hearing, so we're with that. Are we going, is staff is gonna be through the plan again? So the applicant is requesting approval of a precise plan and tentative tract map for the construction of 158 residential condominiums, 66 single-family residential-style detached units, and 92 attached townhome-style units. Internal drive aisles, common open space, guest parking space, spaces, and other associated incidental improvement on a 9.14-acre site. A tree removal permit is required to remove nine significant trees on-site, five oak trees, two maple trees, and two bottle-brush trees. The project also involves a request for a general plan amendment to change the general plan use destinations from civic schools to neighborhood medium, basically changing from school to neighborhood medium, and a zone change to change the zoning from single-family residence to a specific plan. Then we will be hearing from staff report.
Yes, Chair Hang, Joanne, our planning manager, will provide the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable chair members of the public. I'll go ahead and start off the presentation with a summary of the last, of what had occurred and was discussed on the last planning commission meeting, which was held on March 9th, 2021. During the meeting, staff presented the project details. And I'll go over the, I'll go over the basic and show, show the site plan in, in a later slide. Everybody heard from the city's environmental consultant, which is Somus, who summarized the initial study and mitigated negative declaration document. The applicant, Glenn Crosby, presented information regarding project design, citing landscape, landscaping perimeter walls, site drainage, trash or waste collection, and parking. 16 members of the public spoke in opposition of the project and their concerns that, the concerns that were provided by the public was related to density, the proposed use, the lack of public parks in the area, drainage issues, traffic issues, and the need for more community meetings to discuss the project. In addition to the public comments, the city did receive, the city did receive comments from the Covina Valley Unified School District. Their representatives spoke in favor of the project. And during the planning commission discussion, the planning commission expressed concerns regarding the down payment assistance program, the height of perimeter walls, the need for additional landscaping along Eileen Street and Roland Avenue. With that, the planning commission continued the meeting to a date certain of today to allow the applicant to reach out to the neighbors. During the planning commission meeting, direct, direction was not made by the planning commission to the applicant to make any revisions to the project. Here is the proposed site, site plan. The project in itself has not changed. There's still 158 units with two car garages with the 66 two-story, single-family style units are sited along the north side, the west side of the property. And the three-story townhomes are sited mostly on the east side of the property near the adjacent commercial development or properties. The common open space remains at, towards the mid, the mid-third of the property at 10,450 square feet. Landscape buffer, the conditions of approval has, has been updated to require landscape, landscape buffers along Eileen Street to block, to block or provide some buffering between the street and the required seven-foot-tall wall. And additional landscape screening is, is also, would also be required along Roland Avenue. The, the condition of approval has also been updated to require the wall along Eileen Street to be at, at six foot tall. And also, there was concerns at the last planning commission meeting regarding people, the possibility of people jumping the existing wall along the east side and go, going on to the, the project site. So the wall along the east side has been, has been modified in parts of the conditions of approval, requiring that this wall be seven feet in height. In the condition of approval that was sent to the planning commission, the, it states that the, the north, east, and west perimeter wall shall be seven feet in height. However, upon, upon speaking to the applicant, in between the time the planning commission agenda was released till now, the, the applicant has stated that he had spoke to the adjacent neighbors, single, single, neighboring, single-family or residential property, property owners, and they have expressed that they wanted to keep their existing wall in place. So if we can modify the condition of approval to require the seven-foot wall only on the east side and also along Eileen Street, which was the initial concern that the planning commission had at the last meeting. In, in addition, at, at the last planning commission meeting, there were some concerns regarding site drainage. I did confirm with the city engineer that, that the explanation that was provided by the applicant at the last planning commission meeting was, was accurate in that they are providing, or they are going to be installing the, the drainage canister in the parking area right along here. And the area where the drainage canister is, is to be, where the drainage canister would be installed cannot have any structures on top of it. In case it fails, it would have to be dug up. So, so it can only have pavement or landscaping. Staff did make some changes regarding the home ownership assistance program. It was previously, previously called the down payment assistance program. And the change is basically instead of being, making it available to public service employee, employees, it would be made available for first-time home buyers with a preference given to low or moderate-income individuals or families. So this, this, this would be required, the development of the home ownership assistance program would be required prior to the approval of the model home marketing complex. So before they're able to sell any property. During the last planning commission meeting, there were some traffic issues that, or concerns that were brought up by the member, by members of the public. The city's traffic engineer, Jana Robbins, is here to provide and clarify some information that was asked at the last planning commission meeting. In addition, after, after Jana Robbins' presentation, the city's environmental consultant, which is Somus, is available on Zoom to provide some additional information as well.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
In response to comments that came up at the last planning commission meeting concerning project impacts, as well as questions on delay and congestion, staff asked me to clarify a few points. As you all are probably familiar with the way traffic impacts used to be determined. In the past, the determination of whether a project has what is considered a significant impact on a roadway or intersection was determined by how much congestion or delay was being experienced. Depending on this, an intersection was assigned a level, service A through F as a grading system similar to school grades. If a proposed project's traffic caused an intersection to operate at LOSF and exceeded certain thresholds, then a project was considered to, to impact an intersection and mitigation would be required. And then, in this context, a project would mitigate the increment directly related to the project. Defined thresholds of significance were used so that mitigation measures are directly proportional to the impacts of the project, so that a project is not penalized for being last in to be developed. Now, the way we look at project impacts has changed. Although cities look at intersection operation for planning purposes, level service, congestion, and delay is no longer the matrix for determining if a project has a significant impact on streets and intersections. To further explain, beginning in July 2020, SB 743 identified that for CEQA, all lead agencies in the state of California use VMT, or vehicle miles traveled, as a transportation metric. A vehicle mile traveled, or VMT, is literally one vehicle traveling on a roadway for one mile. Regardless of how many people are traveling in the vehicle, each vehicle traveling on a roadway generates one VMT for each mile it travels. To be in line with state mandates, in June 2020, the city adopted the use of VMT analysis methodology for projects when evaluating traffic impacts. The city's guidelines can be found in the city's transportation study guidelines dated September 2020. A key element of SB 743 is the elimination of auto delay, level service, and measures of vehicular capacity or traffic congestion as a basis for determining environmental impacts. This was to be in line with state goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, air pollution, and to promote transit, walking, and bicycling. In essence, promoting those projects that are located close to work, schools, shopping, transit, so that the use of the automobile can be minimized. VMT can be reduced by shifting from a car trip to a bike or walk trip, or from a single occupant vehicle trip to a carpool or transit trip. The state's goal is for cities to provide a better mix of residential, employment, education, and service uses, all within an area to allow people to accomplish their daily activities with less driving and consequently, less VMT. Getting ready for SB 743 to be in effect, the Office of Planning and Research, OPR, provided guidelines that included thresholds to use for determining traffic impacts for CEQA analysis. In this process, each city could elect the following, to follow these guidelines or choose their own. The city of West Covina, along with 26 other cities in the San Gabriel Valley COG, banded together and hired a VMT expert, fear and peers, traffic consultants, to help prepare and write what is now the West Covina Transportation Guidelines. All 26 other cities have also adopted similar guidelines. Following OPR's recommendations, there are several ways a project can be exempt from preparing a full detailed project-level VMT assessment. One, a project is in a transit priority area. Two, a project is in a low VMT generating area. Project type that OPR has considered to be local serving, or those projects that generate less than 110 daily vehicle trips. Transit priority area is defined as a half-mile area around an existing major stop or an existing stop along a high-quality transit corridor with bus routes with a frequency of service interval of 15 minutes or less during the morning and afternoon peak commute periods. Azusa Avenue is considered a high-quality transit corridor. Low VMT area screening. A project may qualify for the use of low VMT screening if the project generates VMT per resident, per worker, or per service population that is similar to a surrounding use. Project screening. Some project types have been identified as their uses are local serving in nature. Local-serving retail. OPR has provided a list. This includes retail establishments less than 50,000 square feet in size, gas stations, banks, restaurants, shopping centers, schools, parks, daycare centers, local-serving hotels, student housing, churches, affordable transitional housing, assisted living, senior housing, and projects generating less than 110 daily vehicle trips. Looking at the initial information for this project, following West Covina Transportation Guidelines under VMT screening, it has been determined that this project is located within a transit priority location and is exempt from a full VMT analysis. Some of the other questions that came up were, how were our vehicle trips for a project generated? Vehicle trips are based on nationally-recognized sources, the 10th Edition Trip Generation Manual. This manual has calculated average rates for each type of land use, which is based on surveys and driveway counts compiled by the Institute of Traffic Engineers. The rate for each land use is multiplied by the number of units or square footage for a project. In this case, the traffic engineer used the ITE rate 210 for single-family homes and 221 for mid-rise family units. According to the traffic analysis prepared by Somus, this project is shown in table one in the, in the traffic analysis. With 66 single-family homes and 92 multifamily homes, the project is expected to generate a total of 1,124 two-way trips daily. Basically, 562 vehicle trips in and 562 vehicle trips out over a 24-hour period. During peak hours, the, the project would generate 82 AM peak hour trips with 21 vehicles in and 61 vehicles out, and 106 PM peak hour trips with 66 vehicles in and 40 vehicles out. The calculation of all these trips are all vehicle trips, not person trips. Okay, another question that came up was access. We look at how project traffic, the proposed traffic exits and enters the site from its proposed driveways. Project traffic is distributed through each project driveway. Normally, the distribution of project traffic is based on the proximity to major traffic corridors, nearby population employment centers, as well as existing traffic patterns. The distribution of project trips, as shown in figure five in the TIA, according to this figure, 60% of project trips were assigned to travel to the east and 40 figure, 60% of project trips were assigned to travel to the east and 40% to the west on Roland Avenue. Project trips on Roland Avenue. According to the city's general plan, Roland Avenue is a four-lane principal arterial with a posted speed of 40 miles per hour. Because of pandemic conditions with schools out and businesses not at full capacity, we had to look at pre-pandemic traffic volumes. The latest available data in city files for this segment was found in the 2017 Citywide Speed Survey. Using a growth factor to come up to 2021, the daily amount of traffic on Roland is 12,000 vehicle trips on Roland between Azusa Avenue and Lark Ellen. Now, the capacity for a principal arterial ranges from 25,000 to 36,000 ADT. So at 20, at 12,000 vehicle trips that is currently on Roland, this is about half of what capacity is. The addition of 1,224 ADT trips on Roland Avenue is about 9% of existing volume and about 4.5% of capacity, using a low 25,000 for capacity. Another, the last comment is left-turn access into the site. Also, as part of access assessment, the project is proposing to provide a left-turn lane into the westernmost driveway. This will require a cut in the median to allow for a left-turn lane and transition into a new left-turn pocket. The project is going to have to submit design plans for city approval for the modification of the raised median to allow for left-turn access at the most western driveway. According to the TIA, in their queuing analysis, there is adequate room to write a cut in the median and accommodate project vehicles to queue. There's approximately 300, 300,000, 300 feet of median between the driveway and the next opening in the median. Assuming allowance of 25 feet per car to queue, there would be adequate room for three to four cars to queue, as well as transition into the turn lane. And as noted in, in the PDF TRA 1, Mitigation Monitoring Program, the applicant will need to submit design plans to the city for approval. There were other questions and comments that came up, but I think we can deal with those if they come back at this, at this time.
I have Aleah and Darlene from Somus on the line. Aleah or Darlene, is there something that you would like to add pertaining to traffic and clarify?
Just being sort of watch.
Darlene, can you hear me? Darlene?
Uh, yes, this is Darlene.
Darlene, is there anything that you would like to add pertaining to traffic to what Jana, our traffic engineers, stated?
Uh, not at this time, I think, um, I mean, I think that was a, a good explanation. Kind of helped explain a little bit better about how, um... Can...
Okay. If, if there are any, if the planning commission has any questions for a traffic consult, for a traffic consultant or environmental consultant, they are on the line on Zoom as well. I just wanted to put that out there. But I'll go ahead and continue on with the presentation. Staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolutions numbers 21-6068 through 6072, recommending that the city council approve the project. And I, I would just like to point out that throughout the week, staff did receive letters from neighbors. I believe I received the one letter in, one letter in support of the project and a number of letters in opposition of the project. All the letters that staff received have been forwarded to the planning commission through email and have also been printed out so that the planning commission can have copies of all the letters in front of them for consideration today. In addition, letters that were provided prior to the last planning commission meeting has been attached to the planning commission agenda packet and was provided again to the planning commission when their packets were delivered. With that, if the planning commission has any questions for staff, we are available to answer.
One question I have for staff. I noticed, um, in the project that they're identifying composition shingles. Do we know what type?
The, the applicants would be able to clarify that question. They did, um, they did provide a, I guess, a photograph of the materials or a description of the materials that they're going to be using in the specific plan, um, but other than that, I don't have much information on it. He, the applicant is here to discuss both, to answer any of the planning commission's questions as well, and also to discuss the neighborhood meetings that he has held in between the last meeting and today. Okay, thank you.
And there's some, there's, there's some right here. Shall we? In the book?
I believe it starts on page 62 or so. Yes, see, these are tile roofs. I was asking specifically about the composition shingle. The applicant is here, so we can ask him later. So do we have any questions for staff? Anyone else?
I, I had a question for the traffic engineer with regard to sort of the queuing that goes in and out of the, the proposed development. Is there, is, is there enough to prevent there from being an issue, say, in the mornings or in the evenings when people are leaving to go to, to dinner or something along those lines, so that they're not blocking the ingress and egress of the, I guess, there's two little cutout sections in, in the front on each side? Or is that something that is outside the purview of what, what traffic is, is covering here?
I think the curb, the cut in the median, um, when I looked at it, it's like 300-plus feet. So if you look at 25 foot per car and you do the transition and have cars queued in there, it's plenty of room for three or four cars to queue. Oh, that was, that not the question? I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was talking about inside the, inside the complex, like, so when people are, when people are leaving, is there going to be a problem with, with queuing? And I, I guess a lot of that's going to come down to what the applicant would ultimately do if this plan were approved and ultimately developed, if there was going to be a, a left-hand turn out or not. And, and also, i- is there enough, i- is, is there enough of a queuing area outside of the, or to get outside of the complex to turn right without, particularly in the mornings when there's a lot of traffic? I, I think that would be my question.
I think this is a, a question for the applicant's traffic engineer. We would review the plans, but they have all the queuing analysis that they have done.
Got it. And then, and then with regard to, with, with regard to, to the left-hand turn in off of, off of Roland, my understanding is they're trying to do the second driveway, so the easternmost driveway, not the, not the westernmost? Is, is that correct?
My understanding, it's the westernmost.
Okay, got it.
Maybe the applicant can confirm that?
And, and so, so they would only be doing one and not the other? That's, that?
Yes, yes.
And I have a question. In regards to the, the entrances to the complexes, excuse me. Uh, in regards to the entrances and exits of the complexes on Roland, would there be stop signs that tell car vehicles to stop when they're entering, I mean, when they're exiting the complex to Roland Avenue?
Yes, that's part of the, the plan review. When we get the plans and building and safety, then that will be part of that process.
Okay, great.
Yes, there will be stop bar and stop signs.
And one question, just in general. Also, in the future, let's just say there's cars that were speeding down the, the inside of that complex area. Is that something that in the future, that obviously the city will work with the homeowners' association to address issues that come up, or that may arise in the future?
Yes. Because it would be private property, so there, um, it's more like a parking lot, so there would be measures that they could do to put traffic calming inside the development.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chair, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Joanne.
Pertaining to Commissioner Williams's question earlier, um, I looked through the project details and the farmhouse, the farmhouse and the cottage-style homes would, would be the composite shingles. And that, the picture of those materials are on page 60 and 61 of 60, 61, and 62 through... Okay.
I'm sorry, Joanne, what page is that on? 51 or 61?
Um, 60 would be for...
54?
60 through, let's see, 65. But the, the applicant, the applicant is here, um, and he'd, he'd be, he'd be able to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Does any other commissioners have questions for our staff or our traffic person? If not, the public hearing is, for this matter, is already closed from last week. However, we are reopening the public hearing for those who wishes to comment on this matter, first time's been here, and also regarding the three items that they made changes to. And I have cards here. The first one is Paul Hamilton. Have you, you already spoken, do you have something to add regarding the three items? Okay, come on up, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, planning commission members and staff. The concerned neighbors and I oppose the project since during the public hearing held on March 9th, related to the proposed Walnut Grove project at 1651 East Roland Avenue, it became apparent that the planning commission's and city staff recommendation to grant approval to this project appears to be based on a misunderstanding of the state of California's Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RENA, and the No Net Law State Law Government Code, Section 65863. The planning department presented the proposed project as an active means of mitigating those state requirements. However, the city has already identified in the current housing element eight sites that meet those requirements. Therefore, we, the residents of the surrounding neighborhood to the aforementioned project, wish to express some additional concerns over the legality of the proposed specific plan in view of the following facts. First, the project site, which is former Pioneer School, is not identified in the current housing element as an opportunity site or in the site inventory of the 2014-2021 Housing Element Fifth Cycle, which means that the site is not subject to the No Net Law State Law. In other words...
Point of order. I, I, I don't mean to interrupt your speech or anything like that. My, my main question, and this is directed to the chair, is that my understanding is that if an applicant or if a speaker has already spoken to us on the issues they need to, they need to address any concerns about the three modifications that were proposed to the project and not, not address anything further. I, I want to be fair to everyone here, so it appears to me that the speaker has, has gone off of those three items, and I, I'd like to keep it fair for everyone so that we're not having to continue, continue this. So if the chair can, can address the speaker and, and make sure that the speaker is, is staying on those topics, particularly where a speaker has already addressed this body, I, I, I think that's the appropriate move.
We do, we should, if you're a new speaker, which you're not, you have spoken the last time, however, we're reopening it. The planning commission was closed already last week. So we're reopening it for new people to come in so we can hear all the new residents.
Okay.
Or, or there are three items that they made changes, so those three items you can speak upon. So I was waiting for you to get to the three items. I don't know if you're going to get there, so if you are, please address those three items. It's basically the walls.
Okay, well...
Perimeter walls, and then the parking and the, the perimeter walls and what was the last items?
It was the revised requirement for seven-foot wall height, um, and screening and landscape buffering, as well as seven, uh, tall block wall along the east, west, and northern property lines, and then the renaming of the Home Ownership Assistance Program, Chair.
So, thank you. So if you have something to add on to those two, two of the items are regarding the block walls surrounding the project. And then the other, the last item is regarding the homeowners' down payment assistance.
Okay.
So if you have those to add on, please add on to that, because I was waiting to hear that from you.
Okay, why can't let somebody else speak?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let somebody else speak that hasn't spoken before?
Okay, then, um, hold on then. I have the cards, so just wait until we'll go through all the cards. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. And we have Lydia Frey. It's Lydia? Oh, okay, he's coming. Again, just in case you just got up here, so I just want to be... Again, just in case you just got up here, so I just want to repeat what I just said earlier. If you have, because the planning commission or the planning was closed already, so if you're new and you're not, haven't spoken about this project, please go ahead. If not, please stick to the three items that we added, which is two of the items is regarding the block walls that just got heightened to, from six feet to seven, and the other one is regarding the homeowner assistant program. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for that. However, I must begin by saying that at the last meeting, the public was instructed to submit media presentations by five-thirty PM before the meeting. I did so, and upon arrival, the planning manager told me that the city will no longer allow me to publicly present my presentation accompanying my remarks. And furthermore, not allowing the public to address us, this is, that's an act of prior restraint. That's not allowing us to present our remarks, and not allowing me to present my multimedia is in violation of the Brown Act. So I'm starting with that. The claims that this is in the interest of fairness is not believable, and it's not reasonable. All of us feel that way in the lobby. So, moving forward, and in here, moving forward, I reject this plan and prefer something benefiting the community. We taxpayers are getting nothing in value for exchange of this public land. It's so strange that Covina Valley School District set the unit count and also happened to be the only party on record supporting this project at the last meeting. We are entitled to know why a school district is telling a developer what they can and can't build. Goals two and four in the Housing Amendment of the General Plan are not being met by this project at all. No low or very low-income housing is included, so how can we say that this promotes equal housing? This does not benefit West Covina neighborhoods nor residents in a meaningful way, nor the goals set forth in the General Plan. Also, by the way, you guys got a copy of my PowerPoint, because it can't be presented. So, someone who works as a civil engineer looked at these plans, and they said that the geometrics of the site will allow for the parking lot to be moved into the site, thus allowing West Covina to be within regulations of not having parking in the front if only the developer will cut back on the number of units. Doing so will allow for all emergency vehicle requirements, curb requirements, ADA requirements, if only Lewis and, and the, the school district will lower their number of units. This increases mitigation of water runoff, contributing to West Covina providing residents with cleaner water. As you can see in my PowerPoint, we have really unhealthy water conditions here, and not doing everything we can to mitigate flooding is a disservice to the community. We should not add residents to these conditions, and on top of that, we should give, we should not give residents unfair and unhealthy, reduced access to healthy living spaces and green space. We live in a park desert. Are you planning commissioners willing to add to this? The little area with one swing set and one bench for their projected five hundred and sixty-nine persons is expected to reside here, should be replaced at the very least with a parquet. Per West Covina General Plan, page one eighteen, access to open space is a basic right. Ten thousand four hundred fifty square feet for five hundred and sixty-nine persons is far too small and unhealthy. It goes against the standards of ten acres per one thousand as a good ratio. This is in page one-twenty-one of the General Plan, and this can be found in the Recreation Park and Open Space Standards and Guidelines document published by National Rec-, by the National Recreation and Park Association. The applicant plans to give point zero-two percent of what is recommended.
Can you please just say, with the three points that you have, those are the new items? I know, I'm sorry, I have to cut you off. So just, you know, please stick onto the walls and also the homeowner associations. We heard your testimony last week, so it's not like something that we've forgotten.
Okay, thank you. So, in terms of the shrubs, this does nothing to, to benefit this community. This does not impact heat island effect in any significant way. Shrubs are pretty to look at, however, they don't really add value to the residents, they don't add value to our air, they do not contribute to the point zero percent of parks that, that the applicant is willing to give these, these residents. In your pocket, as an aside, you guys have suggestions that I request that, that we give the residents on Roland, basically signage and residential permit parking only. And basically, in summary, this land is still in escrow. Until July, either party can pull out. This should be returned to the community and made into something else that actually benefits the community, including the Covina Valley Unified School Districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if, if I can, if I can chime in, I, unfortunately, I, I, I don't want to cut anyone off here. Unfortunately, though, these are the rules that are set up. If, if, if this body wishes to, to amend those rules and reopen the public hearing to comments on everything, I think that this body should, should motion to do so. However, I, I think, I think we need to be consistent. I, I, I think with regard to, for example, Mr., Mr. Hamilton...
Commissioner Lewis, I heard you, and this is not the first time that I talked over the mic. This is almost the second or the third or the fourth time. I'm saying the public hearing for this matter is already closed from last week.
However, my...
I will reopen the public hearing for those who wishes to comment on this matter. So residents and anyone that would like to come up to speak, please try to stick to the three points, unless you are new, and those will be your items. So I heard, I heard you, and we will try to make sure the meeting stay with the three items, and also when you're new.
I, I understand that, but my...
Thank you for helping me bringing the matter up.
My, my, my concern is, is that we did not let Mr. Hamilton speak with regard to the entirety of his comments. We let Ms. Frey speak with, with regard to pretty much the entirety of her comments before we, before she was, before she was cut off, and that's my biggest concern. I want to be fair to everyone here. I want everyone to have...
I, I hear you.
And, 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 and we should, we should abide by that. That's, that, that's the standard that I would like to see us do.
Yes, I do hear you, and thank you for helping out with this matter. And so the public, please try to stay with the three items that we have already discussed. Again, the public hearing for this matter has already closed last week. I will reopen the public hearing for those who wishes to comment and, on those new three items, and also new. So please try to stick with that, otherwise we, we really have to stop you from speaking if that is the case. So we have Marie Hogan and Commissioner Lewis, please, thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
I have not spoken before.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Marie Hogan. I have lived on Homer's Avenue since December of nineteen eighty and raised my two sons here. I believe the project designed by Lewis has many deficiencies, most if not all related to environment and density. To name a few, failure to preserve our established neighborhood resulting in the loss of value to our own properties, potential parking problems, increased traffic and safety issues, environmental issues which may not have been studied or measured accurately during the COVID pandemic, setback requirements and the lack of open space and greenery throughout the development, the potential maximum height of buildings at forty-five feet, unfavorable precedents which may affect future similar development projects in other areas of our city, the ability of guest developers to change plans once plans and permits have been procured. All of these issues can be talked about at length. I will focus briefly on a few. Preserve our established neighborhood. The homes in our neighborhood would sell for several hundred thousand more than the Lewis units. In May two thousand and nineteen, I finished remodeling, a huge remodeling and landscaping of my property, and have noticed that many of my neighbors are doing the same. The neighborhood is looking better now than when I moved here in nineteen eighty, and that's kind of a good thing. Parking. The Lewis plan proposal of two cars per family and a visitor's face here and there for guests will not be enough. How many families only have two cars, and how many of those two cars actually go in their garages? Where will these residents go? They will first park on Roland, and then around the corner to Leaf and the other connecting streets. Traffic, and I appreciate all of the comments that our traffic expert said, and I am no traffic expert. I had no idea how bad traffic can be on Puente and Roland avenues until I retired from teaching from Treyrick Middle School. I had no issues, because when I was teaching, I always got to school way before traffic had begun and left way after it was over. However, my first dentist appointment at eight AM on the corner of Roland and Grand set me straight. As I approached the signal at Azusa and Roland, I noticed a lot of cars ahead of me and had no way of getting to the left or to the right to change course. I was stuck and nearly late for my appointment. It's not only about leaving at a certain time. There will be more traffic on Leaf, Homerest, and other connecting streets as the residents in the development learn that they can take a shortcut through our streets to get to Puente and Azusa. While you commissioners will not be personally affected by the decisions you make here, the residents of this city will. Put yourself in our shoes. Please ask the developers to decrease the number of units, adjusting their plans to address the bullet points mentioned earlier, so this development doesn't become a concrete jungle eyesore. Scrutinize their plans, as you did mine, when I began my remodeling project in two thousand and sixteen, right down to the stone that I had planned to use to replace the ugly worn-out wood siding on my home. Your worry then, and ours now, is that it won't blend with the surrounding neighborhood. Consider some fairness for both Lewis and the established homeowners of this community. And I do want to add one more thing. My husband was an economist, and he worked as a chief financial officer and controller of some very big companies. And he would say, you know, money is money, you need to do what is best. However, there are a lot of ways to make money on this project, and you can do so by reducing the density, increasing the value of the homes, and there are other ways. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vicky Claudius. And just to get ready, our next speaker is Ray Santos and Susan Paradas.
I did speak two weeks ago, so I'm not going to go over what I have prepared, but I want to say that the people in our neighborhoods want to be able to voice our opinions and facts. There are a lot of facts that we did not go over last two weeks ago. So when everybody here who is new has spoken, I understand that, new people need their time to speak too. But I would like to request that those of us who prepared new items, because believe me, there are a lot of things that are in this plan that need to be brought out, so I would like to respectfully request that we have that opportunity when other people who have not spoken have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Ray Santos, followed by Susan Paradas.
My name is Ray Santos.
Can you bring the speaker up so we can hear you?
My name is Raymond Santos. I live on Roland Avenue, right across the street from the, from the project that we're talking about. I did have something prepared too, but I also would like to mention what she just mentioned. This project is obviously affecting the community quite a bit, and there are new items that are being brought up. There were items that were being brought up last time that we all want to have a chance to speak to. The person that was cut off was putting up some points that I did not know and I did not hear about either, so I would appreciate if you guys give everybody the opportunity to talk, even if they spoke before. You say you want to be courteous to everybody here. I think everybody's in agreement that we want to hear what everybody else wants to say. Thank you. I also have a concern on traffic like everybody else. I live right in front of Roland, I mean, right in front of the school. When the pan-, before the pandemic, there was constantly traffic accidents at that turn, at that turnaround right there. Probably, you guys don't hear about it, because many times they were minor, single cars, but there were some major ones where the fire department had to be called, where the paramedics had to be called, and people were injured. My concern here is that this project is going to bring a lot more people there, one hundred and fifty-eight units and a lot more cars. I know you, I've, you said about the report and how many cars are going to be there, but living right in front, I know what kind of traffic this creates, and I'd like you guys to really look at that and, and consider that, uh, consider that. I wasn't aware that there was going to be a stop sign or a light at that, at that location, so I, I imagine that that's also going to affect the environment differently. Now cars have to start and stop right there. There's also a stop sign at Azusa, which is also going to be affected, and I think that has to be addressed, and it has to be reviewed as well. This was just brought up today, again, things that we did not know before. Parking. Again, before the pandemic, when that school was in session, there, there was no parking on the street at all. There was no parking. We couldn't even pull out of our driveway because cars were passing by and we couldn't see. So this is going to be a safety issue, and it is going to affect the parking. The developer or the builder believes that people are going to park their cars in the garage. These are small houses, and each house is going to have four, three, four, five people in there, and more than likely, they're all going to have cars. All you have to do is drive around and you'll see that everybody has more than two cars. So those people are not going to park in their garage, because they're going to store their items, and they're also going to start parking outside. The HOA, I've mentioned, he mentioned that the HOA is going to police this. Well, I've worked for a developer, and the HOA, HOA is controlled by, by the owners. One year after that they move out, because they'll be gone, the HOA is going to say, if this is the case, everybody could park wherever they want, or people are going to determine that, and then they're going to start parking in the streets. If you ever driven at night to one of these developments, you'll see that it is packed with people parked on those, on those, uh, open parking spaces, and they've, uh, the exes parked out in the streets, taking people's parking spaces. That is something that has to be considered. I know that the environmental plate people here have looked at it. Again, I've seen it, and, and, and even though it's considered opinion, I know for a fact that this will affect that. The parking lot in front of that community as well. Somebody at the last meeting stated that this was, that this was, uh, goes, goes against the municipal code. I drove around other communities, and not one of the communities in West Covina has a parking lot in front. Apparently, this site, this proposal is what's convenient for the builder, because he said nothing else will work, but that's not what's convenient for us, and that is not the way to go. That should not be, and they should have looked another way to build a, to build that parking space. I'm sure that there's other developers that could see and offer a different type of plan. There was somebody else that mentioned that why turn it into a housing, why not make it into a community center or a park? And as I was, this is the first time that I go through the, to the, to the West Covina website, I actually wish I would have got involved much sooner, but in the, the, I'm sorry, I can't see. In the General Plan Policy, it specifically states that, well, that, specifically mentions this site as an opportunity for a small park, so that is a great opportunity to have a park versus...
He's exceeded his time limit.
Thank you very much for your time, and I do hope that you listen to us and give us another more chance to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I've talked before. This is from my heart, so you haven't heard it, okay?
Is this, are you Susan?
I'm Susan, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We have been involved in the Pioneer Project for several years, five to seven approximately, going to school meetings, planning meetings, and listening, and still, after all these years, our concerns still are not being heard, thus not answered. We are not being put through, we, what we are being put through is not very nice for the community. We hear you, but are you not, but you are not listening to us, thus you're not hearing us. Some of us did not understand all the laws, but over the years, we have... Some of us did not understand all the laws, but over the years, we have had quite a few people in our neighborhood that have helped us greatly to understand what is really going on. But do you know the stress that you are causing us? We are afraid of losing our beautiful homes and peaceful neighborhoods. Wondering if our concerns will be heard? We don't know. We're not against the project, we, but, excuse me, we are not against the project, but we have told you that, and you would find that in our emails if any of you have been reading them. Now, I will get, as you see, it's all crossed out, so I'm skipping to parking. Traffic has to do with parking. And when the tragic accidents happen.
I'm sorry, the three items, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to do this, but I do have to stick to the four items.
Isn't parking, parking, parking have to do with traffic?
No, there are, there are two items has to do with the walls, the block walls.
Oh, I can talk about the wall then, because the wall's right where I live.
Okay.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you. And then the other items.
No, the seven-foot wall is nice, okay? Great, you gave it to us, and you're going to put shrub on it. Great, okay? Now, that's all I need to say except for this. Open your eyes to see and your ears to hear and your souls to know what is right and what is wrong. And look at this project, not just for what money can be made, but what the people, and the people that will be buying these homes, how they're going to be hurt when they find out how bad they really are and how cramped they really are. You are not being honest with us or them. My last comment, I want to know who "they" are. They say, what we were told, "they," this is what the people want now. Very small units with only one small green space, low walls, and hardly any parking, instead of a house that we can make into a home and have room for us, our children to run around in a yard, both front and back. Hey, maybe plant some trees, maybe grow some flowers, even vegetables. Hey, maybe put a pool in. Hmm, I really don't know anyone like that. And I have one thing to say. I haven't talked about this. I have not talked about this because you're trying to keep us and our voices down and our concerns. We keep repeating our concerns because you're not listening to us. Please do. God bless you.
Thank you, Susan. I'm Carl Frey, followed by Teresa Cozad, and followed by Angie.
Hello, Commission and West Covina staff. Thank you for your time. I've not spoken before. This will be the first time I go over some of the same things that people have stressed, and it's because it concerns us. So, one of my concerns is with the removal of all this grass and greenery, it contributes to a heat island effect. It's a very, there's a very, very small green space plan for this project. And as the city continues these infill projects, which will have to happen, we're just eliminating all the green space and putting asphalt and cement there, which long-term is not going to be good for the city here. So I don't think we're really looking at that. Zoning? Currently, it's zoned for a school because that's what's there. So we want to turn it into some type of residential zoning. The current zoning where I live, which is two parcels west of the school, is eight units per acre. And the applicant is applying for over 15 per acre. I think that's excessive for that transition to go from that small parcel over to all the other types of older residential structures that are there. It's not aesthetic, it's not good. And what it's really doing is causing, what other people have said, the parking. When Pioneer School was in session, I would come home from work, and I have about 100 feet in front of me, and there'd be four cars cramped there that I could barely get into my driveway. I believe that's not going to change. I too believe that 14, 400 and something spaces for cars for that unit is not going to be enough, you know? They can have an HOA try to police it and say you must park two cars in the garage, and there's 99 other spaces out there. There will be overflow. And it's going to be just like when school was in session. People are going to park, use up all my space in front of my house, and then they're going to park across the street on the south side and create a very dangerous situation, which I used to see constantly, which is park your car on the south side and run across a busy street at night to get to where you're going. It's dangerous. It shouldn't happen. And the HOA is not going to police the outside streets. They're going to police the park, the property that they're hired by. And then people are going to park at the Chase Bank and at Norm's, and it's just going to create a problem. Traffic safety is my biggest concern. I know you didn't have to do a VMT study, and the numbers that the traffic department came up with and it being extrapolated from something else, I just, I'm not the expert, but I do not believe that that small percentage that they extrapolated is really going to be the fact. You're going to have 400 and something cars there, and they're going to leave pretty much peak times. In the morning, going to work and taking their kids to school, and then returning late in the afternoon. And adding that many cars at peak times is going to be dangerous for the way that street is set up now. When I go to work, I have to leave West on Roland and then make a U-turn at Home Rest. There's no left turn pocket. I'm just stuck in the middle of that inside lane, and it's like taking my life in my hands. People are coming down the street way over 40 miles an hour, and they're honking because I'm trying to make a legal left turn, and they're giving me hand gestures, and I feel like they're going to plow into the back of me. You're going to add 400 more cars to that every morning. That's craziness. It's crazy. Their cars are going to be swerving and going all over the place, and unfortunately, somebody is going to get struck. There's going to be a pedestrian strike, and someone's going to have a bad injury or lose their life. And I just don't believe that that's what this is for. So, those are my main concerns. I do believe in progress. I do think that something should be filled in there. This is just much too dense, and it's dangerous, and as a taxpayer and somebody who loves this city, it's extremely disappointing. I feel disrespected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Teresa Konzoy.
Teresa Cozad.
Oh, Cozad. Thank you. I'm not sure if you spoke in the past, but if.
I did, and I have not, speaking on what I had planned because I spoke in the past, but I'm going to.
Wonderful, thank you.
Address some of the issues that you said. But I don't think what you're doing is right. I think we should, because there's lots, we have lots of new material. We have done our homework.
Thank you.
So, I would like to address the money that they're going to give to people. They say it's going to be $150,000. You, I didn't hear for how many people. I wonder if it's still 15, like it was before, for low to moderate income people. The amount of money that they're going to sell these dwellings for, you're not going to satisfy any low-income people. They are not going to be afford, they're not going to be able to afford it, even though you're going to give them $10,000. That's basically enough for closing costs, so that's a, that's a wash. And the other thing I'd like to address concerning those three things that the developers said they were doing, we asked for many things when we met. We have met with the developer twice, and many, many things were brought up. The only thing that the developer is addressing that was brought up is the seven-foot wall, and that was even brought up before. But the things that were brought up during this last two weeks, nothing, not one thing has been addressed by the developer, and I think you need to know that. And we're just asking you, we know something's going to happen. We want it developed. We're just asking you to not approve it right now, to table it until we can work with the developer. And then tonight, I heard that even the traffic situation, the man mentioned the stop sign. We don't know anything about those stop signs. You don't know how the traffic pattern is going to be. Nobody knew that yet. They said that eventually that will be talked about when the time comes. I think all of those things need to be concrete, and we need to know before you approve anything. What is it going to look like when they do left turns out of there, when they do right turns? How is the well going to be? How many cars can stay in there? If you haven't driven down Roland when there's a lot of traffic, just like the man before me said, and you try to make a U-turn, you've got people coming behind you. And those are things that are going to happen, and you don't have any answers for that. They haven't given you those studies yet. So we're asking you to table it so we can get all the information that we need and give us more time to try to work with the developer, because he's not given us a thing yet. In the two meetings, we head with them. Thanks.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Angie.
Thank you. Okay. Planning Commissioner's staff, first, the residents who surround this property of Pioneer School are not against development. That needs to be said and clarified. What residents would like to see built is something that blends in transitions to the current residential homes. More compatibility, less abrupt a development than what Lewis Company is proposing of two- and three-story condos. High-density housing does not blend into the current aesthetics of our suburban neighborhoods. We are aware of the state pushing for housing. I educated myself on the RENA acronym, which is also known, for people who don't know that acronym, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. What the state is asking for is for cities to designate and identify areas of development. Cities don't build houses. Yes, this site could have had a zoning change to accommodate residential homes, just not this current development. And I need to clarify, the residents requested to meet with the developer, not the developer wanted to meet with the residents. So we have met twice with the developer, and only to be told that changing the design is not economical for the Lewis Company. We ask that the developer be more reasonable and scale down the number of units to start, to eliminate the parking in front and the development of Roland Avenue, and to increase the setback allowances to the west and north side of the development. Just a few items, there were many more. We ask that you do not allow for zoning of any changes at this time. We would ask that you direct the Lewis Company to go back to the drawing board and work with the longtime residents who are willing to meet and discuss further on a more agreeable development that all parties would be happy with. Established residents should be considered first. Thank you. I'm passing around an example of the Hearth Heathdale on Puente Avenue, which was something that the residents had all wanted to let you know that that was something that acceptable. And so that's what I was just passing as an example. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker is Manuel Hamilton. And our next speaker following is Audrey Santos, followed by Fabiola.
I have not spoken. Thank you. The developer is proposing to increase the allowable building density on the site by 115% from eight units per acre to 18, and is offering a meager $10,000 buyer assistance program to only 15 of the proposed units to low- or moderate-income families. That appears that the planning department and the developer are mispresenting Section 6.1.6 of the current housing element for 2014 to 2021 with regards to the density bonus, which states, "State law allows a developer to increase the density of the development by up to 25% over the otherwise maximum allowable residential density if provisions are made to contain at least any of the following. At least 5% of the total units are reserved for and affordable to very low-income households; at least 10% of the total units are reserved for and affordable to low-income households; at least 50% of the total units are reserved for and affordable to moderate-income households." The proposed development does not meet the low- and moderate-income and senior citizen housing municipal code requirements since, as proposed, this development would not facilitate housing for low and very low-income households with that required restrictions. Additionally, it was repeatedly stated that during the meeting that the project must be approved because of the laws in California, and that is simply incorrect. The project would need to be approved by the right without a public hearing if the zone allows for the density being requested. In this case, the developer is asking for a zone change to a specific plan to circumvent the city's established requirements related to density, setbacks, landscape, structure, height, and floor area ratios, et cetera, and compelling the reviewing body to approve as proposed. The city's general revision plan calls preserving the stable residential neighborhoods with no significant changes in land use are expected over the next 20 years. It continues, "The goal is maintaining the character of these areas. Our neighborhood represents one of those stable residential neighborhoods within the city. Additionally, the same goal can be found under our well-planned community. Document the calls to redirect growth in the downtown areas and along major corridors, Sunset Avenue, Glendora Avenue, and North Azusa Avenue." These are just a few legitimate concerns that the committee cannot afford to ignore. Therefore, I kindly ask that you uphold the city's statements and its regulations and table this project to an undetermined date, as we, the community, are willing to work with the developer in good faith to reach an agreement that will be mutually beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking. I was just here for support, but.
You state your name, please.
My name's Audrey Santos.
Thank you.
And I live directly across the street from the project. My address is 1638 East Roland Avenue. So you know that turnout that they're speaking about? I'm right in front of that. And I have a picture, actually, of it. I took this photo the other day because I was admiring the views of the mountains. I have a beautiful view. Well, with this new project, I'm not going to have any view now. But I want you to kind of take a look at it. I hope you can see my phone or the photo, how the turnout is. And can you see it? Can you see the turnout? Can you see it? So, the development's going to be where the school is, and you're going to have the residents pulling out and making a left turn right in front of my house. When school was in session, we constantly had accidents. And I understand that she did a traffic report, but there was nothing about accidents. And my husband addressed it earlier, saying that, yeah, there were some minor ones, but there were also some serious ones where the paramedics were called, and it was a big issue, especially when the school was open. It's going to be a big issue now. Having 158 homes and people just coming out and making the left, because they're going to make the left there, and that's going to be right in front. The parking's going to be an issue. I'm not going to be able to back out of my driveway. See, you can see my driveway. I won't be able to back out because there's going to be cars parked. There's not enough parking there. Oh, and then the parking is going to, their parking lot's going to be right in front of my house, so I'm going to be looking at it. That will be my new view. Instead of the beautiful mountains, it's going to be a parking lot. And it's sad. I think you should really listen to the community. I'm in agreement with all my neighbors. Please table this, table this item. Also, are you guys aware of the other projects that are around in the neighborhood? The Workman Project of 119 homes? You know, Roland's. You know, Roland's Workman's just a street over. So on Workman, there's going to be 119 new homes. That's another project. And then you know where the bowling alley is, the old Covina Bowling Alley? That's 159 homes. That's going to be taken out, another 158 homes. Townhomes are going to go there. And then plus, you have the Pioneer project. And that's all in the same area. Can you imagine the traffic? And of course, we live by a bus station, right? That's, that's the traffic report. That's, that's why they're exempt from having, you know, I don't know what kind of exemption they get. I'm not up on all that, you know? But it's just going to be horrible. And, you know, there, there's no bike lanes there. I know they said that with the VMT that, you know, people are going to be walking and, you know, there's going to be close, there's close transportation. It's just, it's just, just a bad project. It's, the general plan policy does nothing to preserve the community, doesn't redirect growth to the major corridor. The project doesn't do, do any of that. So I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Then next speaker, we have Fabiola, followed by Mark Arada.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commissioners. In regards to the wall, I don't have any issues with the increased height, but I will recommend that all the walls are split face on both sides. Some of them are precision block and is really not desirable. In regards to, you call it, the assistance homeowner program, I don't know, none of the documents prepared by the city indicate that this is a locally disadvantaged community. And one of the things to address that is providing access to housing, which this project doesn't do, meaning for very low, low and moderate income levels. So as you consider this project, consider that, that $150,000 would not provide access to those income categories. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really wasn't prepared to speak, only because I really don't know all the specifics and the laws and things of what's going on. But after the first meeting I was at, one of the things that was really tiresome for me was the fact that they spent a lot of time talking about the birds and the bird nests and the trees, taking care of, taking care of the trees, taking care of possible Native American burial grounds, talked about the, how you're going to take care of the district or take care of Lewis, but the one thing you haven't taken care of or thought of is us and our neighborhood. Why 158 units? Why not 200? Why not 300? The sky's the limit. The more you get, the more money you get. And that's what it's all about. And once it's sold, Lewis gets it, he could sell it to somebody else. And then all bets are off. When that happens in the end, you'll all be gone, Lewis will be gone, someone else will be in there, and they're going to add more. They're going to open up the cul-de-sacs. I could see it coming. The situation is bad in building it, and it's bad in the sense that you have to rezone it in order to build it. Today, you set the agenda for only three things. And I'll say parking, just to say that I spoke on one thing. But we've talked a lot about the parking and how it's going to impact the entire neighborhood. And I, from what, from what I see, you chose three things to control the narrative. This project will not benefit us. It'll benefit other people that are going to receive funds, line their pockets, whatever you want to call it. It's not going to benefit us. And for that reason, I say table it until there's more study. And more study in terms of the traffic and what it's going to do to the neighborhood. And I'd like for us to table this and hopefully we can get together and not, again, my, my son's a, a commercial real estate agent and, and he buys and sells. And I know there's progress, so I'm not against anything being put there, but I am against it kind of being ramrodded through. Only three questions on three things. Two of them were mentioned, and the third one, she couldn't remember until she looked at her notes. I say table it. I'm not against something being put in there, but 150 units to me is a stretch. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's our last speaker.
Madam Chair, I, I don't know if that was the last speaker, but I, I would like to point out, I don't know if this gentleman has spoken previously, but I did want to clarify that if anyone has not previously spoken, they can speak generally about this project. And, and I, I would, I would certainly like the chair to remind anyone who, who desires to speak that they can certainly speak on any issue related to this, so long as they have not previously spoken.
Thank you. Basically, any, any speaker that would like to come up to speak, you can speak about the project, anything. We're not limited to the three items. However, for those who spoke the last time that you were here, we had to, basically, we heard your testimony. We just wanted to hear regarding the three items that got changed or, or added to the, to the project. So I don't have any more cards. So do we have any Zoom?
Madam Chair, we do have a couple callers on line.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to call on Cynthia. I'm going to ask her to unmute herself right now. We have had some trouble, so I am asking her through the Zoom chat, which is not common, but unfortunately, this is what we have to do for now. Cynthia, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself at this moment. We'll just give her a couple seconds.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I did want to note that...
The Zoom chat is not common, but unfortunately, this is what we have to do for now. Cynthia, if you can hear me.
Yeah, hi, I'm sorry. This is actually Dan and Cynthia, Cynthia's husband. Can you hear me? Thank you.
I did want to note that the Zoom chat is not common, but unfortunately, this is what we have to do for now. Cynthia, if you can hear me.
Yes.
Hi, yes, this is, this is Dan Garcia. I'm Cynthia's husband. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Dan, we can hear you, so go ahead and speak.
I've expressed to them on the chat that we can hear them.
The phone lines are down, so we're having some major technical difficulties going only through Zoom. So we do appreciate everyone's patience tonight.
Looks like they just muted themselves again.
Oh, good. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. I, I can't, no, I see you're saying you can't hear me. Okay, fine. If you can hear me, I'll just go. Yeah, I just wanted to, and my wife and I once wanted to say that we support the speakers that have come on tonight with everything that they've said. I think as far as tonight's meetings go, I was, so far, have been a little surprised that there's only been two questions by the Commissioners that have been asked tonight. One is on the shingles of the, of the property, and the other one is related to the turnout. I also would like to respectfully request that the Planning Commission also tabled this project to the further time and would like to be able to give back more time to the folks there that have or would like to discuss topics that were not either addressed in last meeting or have since been raised since that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And Renee, our next speaker, please.
Daria. Daria.
To the further time and would like to be able to give back more time.
Hi, this is Darius Roth from Somas. There's a lag, so I don't know if I'm speaking over anyone.
To the further time.
We're going to move on to Chloe.
Hi, this is Darius. Hello?
Hi, Chloe, we can hear you.
Hello, do I go? Hello? Yes? Can I speak? Okay, so I have not talked and I am speaking because I watched the city council last week. And there were many holes in the developers' rebuttal to the comments that were made. And I just wanted to put a face or a voice to those issues. Specifically, the first is that I went, I've lived on Leaf for 30 years. I went to Roland, Truwick and Middle School. And developers stated that they're putting bike racks into the complex to change behavior, to encourage people to ride their bikes. So that would reduce the parking and the car usage. But in reality, as a young woman who attended all those schools, not once have I ever rode my bike, go on jogs in this neighborhood. It is a safe neighborhood, but as a person, there is still the reality of getting mugged, raped, attacked. And so I don't think putting in a small entity would really change behavior of these people moving in. Secondly, the developers stated over and over the term economic viability, specifically focusing on maximizing their gains overall. That is the reason they want to change the zoning, to increase the amount of houses they can build. In reality, they stated the condos were needed because no one wants to live facing the food for less parking lot. On Eileen, there's eight houses. They currently live there. They're filled with people. That's just an issue. Also, I know a lot of people would say, oh, if you don't like this development, go ahead and move. You can't move. California has Prop 13 on our taxes. I try to move, my taxes go up. It just, it doesn't make sense for me. So you're focusing on the economic viability of the developers, then helping the people who actually want to make the city better, want to be a part of the community. And also, the third is that everyone's talked about the traffic report. Great traffic report, but it didn't specifically address the issues that would happen to the surrounding areas, specifically Home Rest, Leaf, Eileen, Eckerman. Those areas of traffic, when they cut through, people speed through there right now. There's issues already. So you're increasing the amount of issues that would happen in the surrounding areas that the traffic study didn't look at. Also, to put just a voice to the issues people are saying, I personally have been on Roland at these intersections people are talking about, been a passenger in a car, got hit. I've also personally totaled my car on this intersection because as people are making U-turns during the morning trying to go traffic, it doesn't work. It hasn't worked and it doesn't work, and I personally completely have been in accidents. So it's not something that people are making up. And I think these are the issues that are not being addressed. And focusing on just what the issue is here, our issue is the density. So don't change the zoning. We are aware that something needs to be developed, but if these issues already exist, why are you trying to exacerbate them? And specifically, there was a comment made about homeowner value. I'm an economist. Increase supply, the value of the houses around goes down. I know that's not an issue that we should care about because we're trying to address affordable housing, but the developers said it would increase our housing value. It doesn't. I just think that there's a lot of issues specifically about our safety and our ability to go about living in the city that we want to be a part of. And the community that's being developed isn't going to be people who want to be a part of this community. It's about people like the developers stated, who don't want backyards, who want to go to work, come home, and that's it. They're just going to drive through the streets and go whatever they want. And I think you should focus on developing areas that will enhance the community and focused on people who will send their kids to the school down the street and not send their kid to a private school somewhere else. Focus on what you want your community to be. And none of you, I don't think, live on Roland currently. And I've lived here for 30 years. I've watched people jaywalk. I've watched them. I've experienced all the accidents, and none of these issues are being addressed. So to address this is to reduce the zoning. Don't increase the zoning. Leave it how it is. And these issues won't be exacerbated. Go for the development, but don't increase the zoning.
All right, we have two more callers. I will call on Elizabeth now.
Thank you. This is Dr. Elizabeth Emmanheiser, and I'm representing Covina Valley Unified School District in support of this project. This year alone, Covina Valley has unfortunately experienced a decline in enrollment of over 170 students. This project will help our enrollment and support our ongoing programs within the district. The school has not been used in any capacity by the district since March of 2017, when we moved the adult education to a fully modernized facility. Due to the age of the facility, the existing buildings on the sites do not meet the Americans with Disabilities Act compliance or have high-speed internet connection. They were actually using dial-up connection when we closed the school. And they, it would be cost prohibitive for the district to maintain the facility. This site has not been an active K-12 school for over 40 years. Finally, the district did put deed restrictions on the project as it was based on input from community members and multiple community meetings. And the project does meet the deed restriction requirements. So thank you for your time.
Okay, one more. And that's Edgar.
Good evening. My name is Edgar Milan. I'm a resident at Leaf Avenue in the surrounding neighborhood. Planning Commission members, staff, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to address this commission and would like to begin by expressing my disappointment with a statement made by a member of this committee during the March 9 meeting. That night, this committee member shamelessly expressed his appreciation, and I quote, "For all the contributions that Lewis family has made to the city of West Covina," end quote. I take personal offense to such comments, and I believe it is shameful when a member of this committee openly minimizes and disrespects the contributions of our community. Tonight, we as a community aim to bring the, to the attention of this committee facts and statements that are part of the core vision of the city of West Covina. We have presented a well-educated challenge to the specific plan proposed by the developer. And we have garnered enough support from our community to demonstrate our displeasure and disapproval of the proposed development. In an act of good faith, we, the concerned neighbors, met twice with Mr. Glenn Crosby via Zoom. And during our first meeting, we answered his questions regarding our traffic concerns by sharing with him over Zoom the aerial map of our neighborhood and explaining in detail how even now, under our current population, the streets surrounding the project site are used as dangerous shortcuts to avoid the traffic on Azusa Avenue, Larkeland Avenue, and during school time to avoid the buildup of traffic on Roland Avenue.
Mr. Milan, I'm sorry, we have to, if you can hear me... Mr. Milan, I'm sorry. You do need to, the public hearing is only open for new residents.
Can I continue?
If you, if you spoke last time, which I believe you did, can you please stick to the three items that we need to discuss?
And we made it clear to Mr. Crosby.
And also the, please, so to save for the block walls and also the homeowners.
Chair, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because our phone system was down and the Zoom participants are not able to hear you when they're speaking. So there would not be, there cannot be any interaction. They can voice their statement, but they're not going to be, they weren't able to hear you. That's why he wasn't, he, he's not sure what's going on in the meeting.
We were able to send him a message on Zoom, so we'll give him a little bit to, to see if he can respond.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, I, I, I finally was able to catch up on YouTube. I have you on YouTube and there is a, a rather, uh, large delay. May I continue?
Yes, I've expressed to him that he has to stick to the, the topics on the.
I have another concern that was not mentioned.
And the homeowners assistance program, so.
Yeah, continue, please.
I have you on YouTube and there is a, a rather, uh, large delay. May I continue? You know, I have another concern that was not mentioned. The, the person representing you, the, the Covina Valley Unified School District made a statement about how this, um, meets all the requirements. But there are too many gaps and inconsistencies with the general plan and all the related studies, as well as a lack of transparency in the transaction between the developer and Covina Valley USD. We need to find answers as to whether it complies with the Surplus Land Act. Was the required land exchange completed? How this, um, meets all the requirements. But there are too many gaps and inconsistencies with the general plan and all the related studies, as well as a lack of transparency in the transaction between the developer and Covina Valley USD. We need to find answers as to whether it complies with the Surplus Land Act. Was the required land exchange completed? Now, again, because of all those inconsistencies, we respectfully ask that the committee hold off approval of this project.
I'm sorry, Mr. Edgar.
And the specific.
The public hearing for this matter had already closed last week. And if you spoke last week, please try to stick to the new items that you have not speak about, which is, uh, two of them is on the block wall.
Our concerns cannot be, uh, simply appeased by, uh, offering taller walls and bushes.
You could continue speaking. You don't have to wait to put it back on.
Our concerns cannot be, uh, simply appeased by, uh, offering taller walls and bushes. I apologize, but the gap, the gap, the timing gap between YouTube and, and the Zoom is making it impossible to communicate. It, it, I'm not being rude by any means. It's just the gap. I apologize.
Nope, no problem. We could hear you. There, there may be a delay on your end, but we could hear you, so continue.
I'm sorry, Renee, the time is up already?
So again, I just respectfully appeal to your responsibility. Just, just the last statement. All the things that, that this developer is asking for, he can very well turn around and sell to someone who can potentially abuse the land. That's the last thing I will tell you. So that's your decision.
That's all the callers.
Thank you. I guess we hear from those in favor and those opposed all at the same time? So, do we have any other speakers that are new and/or who would like to speak on the new, the three items that are new? If not, we're gonna hear from the applicants? If you can rebut.
Chair, if I may, um,
Yeah, go ahead.
For the record, I'm not sure if it was already stated, but Commissioner Becerra is on Zoom right now.
Thank you.
Evening Chair and members of the commission, staff and public. My name is Glenn Crosby with the Lewis Companies. Uh, thank you again for the opportunity to be in front of you again tonight. Uh, I'll try not to rehash some of the, the presentation matters as we've covered them uh, prior to the continued, uh, hearing. Since our last, uh, meeting, I did have two meetings with the neighbors. And I do want to, uh, thank the gentleman that just spoke, Mr. Milan. Uh, he was very helpful in, uh, coordinating those efforts. Uh, I think a member reached out and said that, that, uh, or a member mentioned that I did not reach out, but, uh, I talked to Mr. Milan right after the last meeting and, uh, we had both talked about getting, getting a meeting together with the neighbors. Uh, but again, I do thank him. He was, he was very instrumental in getting Zoom set up uh, to make that a lot easier, uh, for both of us. A couple of things I want to just correct right off the bat in terms of, I, I think there was some confusion about a stop sign that came up a couple of times. There's, there is no stop sign, as I think everybody knows, being proposed, uh, anywhere on Roland. Uh, the one, uh, matter, and I believe I brought, brought this up at the last, uh, meeting. Uh, we, in addition to the traffic study, the focused traffic study that was done for the project, we independently hired a traffic study, traffic, uh, engineer to analyze, uh, one of the intersections that a number of homeowners had brought to our attention that had had some issues in years past. And we looked at potentially doing a mid-block intersection and tried to study that, but due to the, the speeds and, and other issues and concerns, it just wasn't feasible. And, um, the city engineer weighed in on that as well and expressed the, the concern and danger of having any type of mid-block type of crossing just because people don't generally expect that when it's not at a, uh, established intersection. Uh, someone else brought up the, uh, park. Uh, I just want to be clear that the private park is not something that receives credit. We're, that is a private park for the homeowners association. We are paying, uh, park fees, uh, in addition, um, to, uh, the, the private park. And that's separate. And that's, that's pretty typical of, uh, most, uh, applications, uh, these days. And the reason for that obviously is rather than have a private park that's just exclusive to your private community, you know, those funds could go towards upgrading, uh, expanding or building new parks for the community at large. Um, I also want to make it clear that we're not requesting, uh, a density bonus that's associated with affordable units. Um, that, that has not been contemplated as any part, uh, of this application. And, and that was, uh, also clearly addressed, uh, in the response to comments and the mitigated negative declaration. Uh, another item that came up, uh, this evening was the, the heat island effect. Um, I know that's terminology that gets batted around, uh, quite a bit. Number one, this project is not of sufficient size to create a heat island. But I want to emphasize, uh, for everyone that we have over 200 trees that are being planted with this project. Flowering trees, layered canopies, you know, trees that are gonna support pollinators, birds, all types of wildlife. It's not just ground cover and shrubs. What's out there today is a handful of trees and turf. And I think everyone, um, is aware that, you know, turf is just a consumer, really. I mean, turf requires irrigation, it requires fertilizer, it requires mowing. Turf is something that belongs in Europe, okay? It's not, it's not something that's, provides a lot of beneficial habitat, uh, for, for anything. It's, it's a play surface and it's great for a school. Uh, but aside from that, uh, it's, it's not, uh, it's, doesn't compete with, you know, a good overall, uh, habitat that, who, that we're trying to deliver. And if you look at all of the plant material, and there's a few here up on the, on the screen, you can see the, the different, uh, species of trees that are being proposed to this project. And they were all carefully selected, uh, in terms of different heights and color schemes and compatibility with the project and location, uh, where they're being planted. As you can see, there's a lot of flowering plant material that's included with this project. Uh, the, the last piece, uh, that I want to touch on first before I get into a, a few other responses was just, I, a number of, uh, neighbors and also someone brought it up tonight, uh, raised the concern of, oh, you know, Lewis is gonna get this project approved, we'll flip to somebody else and they're gonna change everything. I mean, one of the things that we're trying to do with this project is get this fully entitled. And it would, it would be cost prohibitive for anybody to come in after that and make changes to this project. So, um, you know, we've, we've tried to be sensitive with our design. We're carrying these, uh, design and plans through the city that will be handed off to a builder. And I, I don't want to say it's impossible, you know, I've had some, some conversations with, uh, Ms. Paredes and others. And, you know, I, I've emphasized, you know, I want to be honest with, with all of these conversations. And, and it's not impossible that somebody could come in and, and change that. But it would be a major, major process for them to go back through everything that we've already worked through, uh, to date on this project. Uh, I want to, I want to emphasize, uh, a couple of things here. You know, when we've, when we developed this project, we looked at at least 20 different site plans. And I honestly can't tell you how many different product combinations of different types of, of houses and, uh, elevations and, and product design. These are, these are the ones we came up with after just exhaustive amount of analysis. And part of the reason for that is we're in an infill location on the east side of this project and on the northeast side of this project, we are surrounded by commercial. That commercial is not particularly attractive. I understand there are some people on the north side upon Eileen that live next to, uh, the commercial today. I've talked to a number of those people and I know that there have been problems there. I know there've been some issues with, uh, people hopping those fences. I know there's been issues with people traversing, uh, the, the north-south boundary, the poor maintenance of plant material along that northern boundary. There's all types of, of problems. We're trying to eliminate that. One of the other things we're trying to do is have a thoughtful and logical transition of housing types from commercial, from commercial to single-family detached across that site. So yes, we have a, a higher-density townhome product that exists, uh, that we're proposing on the east side, which transitions to a single-family detached cluster product, which then transitions to the single-family detached. I don't think it's fair for, um, some of the proposals that have been thrown out where, you know, people are suggesting that we should just be building single-family detached right up next to the commercial, when there's resistance to living next to the single-family detached homes we're proposing. I mean, there's a, there's a huge disconnect there. So I just want to be sure that, that there's, you know, fair consideration, uh, in comparing those two items. The other thing that, that I think, when we touched on this a little bit earlier is, you know, the buyers today are different than, than I was when I was, when I was buying my home. And I'm sure different than a lot of you in the room. And it's not that they just want to live here and go to work. It's just buyers today are not as enamored with large yards, the maintenance obligations, mowing those lawns, irrigation repairs, all those things that come along with it. They're, they like to be out in the community. They spend a lot more time walking their dogs, uh, you know, going down to local coffee shops, cafes. They're just not interested in, and, and we're seeing this everywhere. This is certainly not unique to this location. But it's just a different buyer today. And I know it's hard for us to put ourselves in those shoes. I, I sometimes struggle with it because it's a very foreign concept. I've, I've read books about it. And, uh, but the buyer's different and that's, that's the reality of today. And it's not that they just want to, uh, come home and go to work and disappear. It's just the fact that they don't want those obligations that largely come with, uh, the traditional single-family detached house. Uh, a couple of other things, uh, that I want to just reiterate. Uh, you know, the, the plan that we have proposed is consistent with everything that's included with the specific plan. The development guidelines, the, um, development standards, uh, the criteria, the architectural styles that we chose that are up on the board right now, we chose specifically. I was personally involved in working with the architect on there based on your review of the adjacent communities and some of the architectural elements that are exhibited in the neighborhood surrounding us. And it's eclectic. I wouldn't say there's a specific theme in the adjacent neighborhoods, but it's certainly something we've tried to mirror and incorporate, uh, into our product. The site design, in terms of, uh, parking, we've, we have 99 additional uncovered parking spaces in addition to the two that are provided, uh, for each unit. What we've done is we're implementing, uh, there was a gentleman that spoke earlier about, oh, the homeowners association, you know, it doesn't, doesn't help, it doesn't, doesn't, uh, enforce this. I, I managed, uh, at one time I was a vice president of a very large community association management company. We had over 250 community associations in Southern California. We had lots of associations that did garage inspections, find people. I guarantee you, those people parked their cars in their garage. They could not be used for storage. It was a requirement in the governing documents. And the, even, even those that, uh, there were a few associations that would allow, if they did have two cars, they would give them a permit to park their third car, uh, in one of those 99 spaces. But that was the exception. And, and that's, that's really the solution for today. And, and we're seeing this across, you know, we're doing this in Ranch Cucamonga. You know, Glendora is having, uh, similar implementation. Uh, these are just the, the ways that we're dealing with a lot of these, um, higher-density products. And that's, that's coming from, you know, California on down. I mean, you're, we're, I was on a call earlier today where the city's trying to figure out how to do mandated 30 units to the Yager. And, you know, they're, they're trying to deal with their RENA obligations. And I think everybody here on this panel understands, RENA is not just about getting the affordable. There's different classifications within RENA. And every jurisdiction's trying to hit those unit counts. And it's gonna be a challenge for all of us. And, you know, that's where the innovation of some of these products is coming from. Uh, the landscape plan, again, we have a seven-and-a-half-foot landscape, uh, buffer against these projects. So in addition to the wall we've been talking about, there's gonna be, you know, nine or 10-foot hedge adjacent to those units that's gonna provide additional privacy. And again, these are part of the discussions that we've had with the neighbors and part of the feedback we've received. Drainage, which has come up a number of times. I know there are drainage problems out at this site that, that, uh, grass does not percolate. And there are, uh, issues down at the southwest corner of that project. And I know the, the neighbor there deals with a lot of, uh, flooding that comes off that site. With the implementation that we're doing with the storm drain system, we're capturing the water that's coming off the product, the commercial project to the north of us, along with our internal, uh, storm drainage in two separate systems. And we have double-barrel 60-inch pipes that are gonna be running through a lot of these parking areas in order to capture that, uh, rainwater and stormwater. And it will be metered out well beyond, you know, the storm periods. What will leave our site will be better than it is today. And we're required by law for it to be no worse. But I'm telling you, with the design that we've implemented, it's going to be even better than it is today. Uh, on Eileen Street, we talked about what we're doing with the cul-de-sac. I mean, not only are we raising that wall and landscaping it, we're, we've made sure there are no penetrations in that wall because the last thing we want to do is go through this effort that we've worked through with the, the neighbors and then just have people park out there and access, you know, their friend's house or their house, uh, on that Eileen cul-de-sac. So we've been sensitive to that. It's another reason why we only have an emergency access there. There is no gates, no other penetrations in that wall whatsoever. And I think by, uh, taking it up to seven, seven feet, which was one of the suggestions, uh, from a commissioner here is, you know, another added, uh, privacy, uh, benefit. Um, lastly, I mean, I want to make it clear, guys, we're, we're not a giant public company that's just chasing, uh, quarterly profits. And I know it's easy to throw builders and developers all in the same bucket. Lewis is a, a family-owned company. And we've been doing this for a long time. I mentioned earlier. I mentioned earlier that, you know, I returned after being away from Lewis for many years. And I came back because we do things right. I mean, that's always, that's the mantra in our office, you know, do the right thing. Not always going to appease everyone. I understand anytime we do an infill project, it's a challenge. You know, people have gotten used to living under certain conditions. You know, in this case, you've had a large green space next to you. Certainly understand that. But, you know, we build master plan communities, and we work with all types of land uses, and we integrate them on a regular basis. And we apply that to every project that we approach regardless of the size. And this site is certainly no different. You know, the projects like this are the ones that people are going to, you know, many communities, if you guys have seen a good examples, like the Route 66 corridor in Glendora. I mean, they took back lots of these blighted corners and old centers that just weren't functioning well. And they put in higher-density product. And yes, the community came out totally opposed to it. And those of you who are familiar with Glendora, there are palatial estates up there. But you go look at that project today, go look at the Route 66 corridor. I mean, it's thriving. And the reason it's thriving is because the people that came in there and bought homes are going down to the corner of coffee shops. You know, they're going to the dry cleaners, they're going to the eateries. They're allowing businesses to get reestablished in those communities. And, you know, people are talking about, oh, you're doing density, this is bad for the environment. What's bad for the environment is low density. Because what happens with low density? In order to get the same number of homes, you have to take up more infrastructure, more streets, more water, everything you need to get to to serve that fewer number of homes. It's impossible to achieve the unit count that the state is mandating by trying to drive low-density development. None of the cities are going to get there. So, with that, I'm open to any of your questions or clarifications on any of the issues that have come before tonight or anything, of course, that was carried over from the last meeting. I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you. And do we have another speaker? From the applicant? That's it, you're the last? Okay, wonderful then. Yes, we're going to move to closer public hearing. Aren't you before the closer public hearing? Let's have our commissioners, if you have any questions for our developers, could you please ask him since he's here?
I do have a question. I noticed in the elevation drawings for the single-family condos as well as for the three-story townhouses, you show composition shingle. What type?
So, the composition is a lighter-weight material, but it's still a cementitious-like polymer. It's not, I think when people hear composite, you're probably thinking of asphalt shingles, and it is not an asphalt shingle.
Right, so what type?
It's just a lighter material, like a cementitious material.
Okay, the reason why I ask, when you go on the internet and you put down comp shingles, they call up three-tab. And then they go into...
Yeah, it's not an asphalt shingle.
So, again, what brand? What brand of composition shingle?
We put a copy in the packet that you have in terms of...
There was flat tile?
ESRI, yeah, it's a flat tile. But it's, you know, it has some relief to it.
Okay, as a suggestion, if it's a tile, because that's the way it looks on the pages that were given, just call it out as a tile and just identify it as a flat tile.
Fair enough.
Because then it makes it clear, because everyone's kind of like, oh, shingle.
That's a fair comment. I want to, you know, just like a member mentioned earlier this evening, you know, our plans are going through an incredible amount of scrutiny. And of course, this is just for, you know, the design review portion of the project. These will have to be submitted in construction documents ultimately by the builder. So, all that will go through full review.
Two other questions I have. I did see where the building department is indicating in order to meet the ADA requirements that 10% of the units need to be where someone who is handicapped would have access. Do you know how many of the units for the single-family cluster and how many for the three-story cluster?
I don't know exactly off the top of my head which units, but yeah, we've been sensitive to that in working with our landscape architect and our architect to make sure we have that dedicated path of travel to be consistent with the law.
Well, see, not just the path of travel. What building, at least what I understood in reading the condition for approval, whereas if someone is handicapped, they would be able to live in the unit. So, I understand the path, you know, the path that traveled the 48 inches, but the units themselves.
Yeah, it's an access issue, accessibility issue to those units.
Well, it is, but my understanding, for example, like the project in Glendora, if someone is in a wheelchair and they wish to buy, how are you guys going to provide them access to a unit that they can buy?
Yeah, it's just in accessibility. Those units are not being built, you know, internally, as I was saying, being modified in terms of the internal. Yeah, it's an accessibility to the unit.
That wasn't what I was understanding from the condition that building actually has attached. So, that's why I was asking for clarification. Also too, I know that you guys are going to be subject to the 2019 building code. So, how are you guys going to provide the 50% of alternative energy? Because your elevations don't show using any type of solar panels.
Yeah, and that will be something that comes with the actual construction documents. We normally don't incorporate that into the design drawings. But yeah, I mean, that takes, that's taken into account, you know, the air conditioning systems, roofing systems, you know, the lighter-weight materials. It's an entire spectrum of products that are meeting those changes. You know, the SEER rating on the forced air units. Yeah, it's a broad spectrum. But yeah, that's not something we generally address on a design drawing like these. But it will absolutely be incorporated in the construction documents that are processed through the building department prior to building permit.
Okay. Chair, if I may, clarify regarding the ADA. Okay, on the projector is the first floor of one of the clusters. And I believe the building code requires that you would have, a person who is considered disabled would have to be able to live on the site. And they only require, and that only requires that they provide a bathroom and a living area on the first floor. So, that would be provided through Plan 3 and I believe Plan 2 as well.
Thank you.
So, it's not a comprehensive modification of the entire unit?
Okay, does any of the planning commissioners have questions for our applicant?
Go ahead.
So, I have some questions regarding the proposed, I guess, subsidy, the $10,000 housing assistance. So, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to understand is, what is the new proposal actually like? From, I'm trying to get an understanding of what has changed in terms of what the qualifications would look like.
I mean, we're trying to make it as flexible as possible, and that's something we've been working through with staff just so it wasn't, I think there was some concern that it was geared to just teachers or just law enforcement. And that really wasn't the intent. It was just really to help with some component of 15 units that provided $150,000 and, you know, could be allocated against those 15 units, however appropriate. But that was really the intent. We've had a couple of these programs where it has been geared, and they've generally been run by the city. And we've contributed funds to that program. And the city has administered it based on people that apply and go through that process. So, we're going to have to, you know, work through developing that program independently only because the city doesn't have a program. But we've committed to working through that. But that's usually where it's geared. There's just some prequalifications that normally go through, you know, the application process. And historically, I think it's been, these programs have been geared towards law enforcement and teachers just because those are so much the fabric of, you know, new communities. Those are the people that we want and to help build around and build the neighborhood. But we're going to expand this program and make it, you know, open to, you know, lower income or other people that can, you know, apply and qualify for the homes and just as an additional incentive.
And then I guess, I guess sort of breaking that down further, is this really going to be something that's going to be something that's going to help people with truly low income get into the? Because to me, it doesn't appear that that's, there's enough money in the pot to actually make that happen. I mean, you know, even if we're talking about an FHA loan, you know, somebody putting three-and-a-half down on a property that's, what are these going to go for? 550s?
Yeah, no, no, you're correct. It was not intended.
You're going to have significant down payment issues where, quite frankly, down payment assistance of $10,000, I don't know. It seems just sort of me, sort of to me like a drop in the bucket. So, I don't know if that's necessarily really going to help anyone of truly low income. It seems more of like a moderate income assistance kind of program, you know, which is fine. And I'm just saying, it doesn't seem to really encompass helping people with low income.
Yeah, that's a fair statement. It wasn't intended. Again, there are no low-income concessions or qualifications associated with this project. It was just something that provided assistance, you know, to as broad a group as we could that would qualify to just to assist with some of the housing costs.
I did have a question. Somebody brought up view considerations. Again, you know, to my knowledge, there isn't any three-story, any three-story buildings that are nearby that would otherwise impact anyone's view along that corridor. So, what I'm trying to understand is, you know, why should we, why should we provide the exception here for a building? My understanding is 45 feet? Is that...
Forty-five is what's contemplated in the specific plan. I think the tallest plan, if you give me just a second, on the architecture, I think is just a little bit over 40 feet.
So, again, obviously, that is a concern that I have. You know, I look at particularly, I think there's six houses that are directly across the street from this project who, quite frankly, would have otherwise at least some access to a view of the mountain straight ahead of them. So, I guess I do have some concerns about that. And has that been something that's been addressed or discussed in terms of what the viewpoint actually is and how that impacts people's views at elevation?
I mean, as you know, views aren't one of the things that are protected, but...
On this city, anyway.
Right, yeah.
But in terms of an infill development, it's something that is part of the panoply of items we can consider.
Sure, yeah. And really, that's, I mean, that's part of the density proposition. I mean, the only way you achieve density these days is, you know, with getting the third story. And that's really, that's really the driver of this density and concept. And that's, you know, the three-story product, you know, there's products going to five stories now, six stories to achieve these, you know, 30 and 40 units to the acre. But at this kind of middle, what I'll call mid-high density, you know, the three stories is really the only way it can be achieved. So, we have tried to be sensitive to that. There is 45 in the specific plan, but none of the plans reach that 45 metric. And again, it is, it's a delicate balance in terms of what we're trying to achieve over there. I mean, this product or this product site, project site, could have allowed a school, you know, back in there. Certainly could have been what you're seeing down in Ontario and other areas with these, you know, vocational schools and DeVries of the world. That could have been multi-stories with a giant parking lot around it, and they wouldn't be going through a lot of the entitlement effort that we're going through for a reason. They would actually be approved to build there under the existing zoning. So, you know, I think we're, we've tried to be sensitive to that. It's something that we, when we reviewed the plan types, there was a gentleman I spoke with the other day at one of the neighborhood meetings, and he was asking why there has to be any, you know, variation in the, between the two elevation styles because, you know, we'd be able to lower the roof. But, you know, when you're trying to achieve certain design standards and architectural elevations, and there has to be some articulation in those roofs and change of angles and hip heights and things just to achieve some of those design criteria.
When we were, when we were talking about this last time, there was discussion about having the seven-foot wall go all the way around along with adding in a, with adding in trees, excuse me. It was the podocarpus, I think, right? If memory serves me right?
Right.
And I think that would go, we had discussed potentially putting that around the entire perimeter of the property, including the commercial areas. I think that would be the eastern and the, I guess this would be the northeastern portion, I think up on the screen. And I don't think that was part of, that was part of anything that you had come back with. Is that, is that something that is easily attainable?
So, one of the things we were really focused on, at least the way I interpreted, was at the cul-de-sac adding the podocarpus to have consistency through that perimeter edge of the community where it was visible to the neighbors, not so much on the commercial side. I don't, you know, the podocarpus is probably, as you can see, on the west and the north side, it's a seven-and-a-half-foot buffer. So, the podocarpus would consume a pretty good chunk of the east side. What we were proposing there was to put the seven-foot wall, which, because now that wall is the biggest problem, I think, in the entire community in terms of the project site, because it's about four feet tall in a lot of areas. So, you know, you can skip up over that without any trouble. But in terms of just visibility and to improve just the look of not having a bare wall, there, we will put some plant material up there, whether it's a climber or some other type of material, just so you're not looking at a blank wall. We will incorporate some plant material into that design. But again, we're not, we don't have the issue with the adjacent neighbors or privacy on those sides, which is really what we were trying to achieve with the podocarpus because we can get it up over the wall height and have it provide more of a visual privacy buffer.
I hear what you're saying. What I'm trying to figure out is, why don't we have at least some sort of buffer on that side? I mean, I understand, you know, climbing plants on the wall or something like that. But to me, given acknowledged issues with that alley that goes behind the businesses there, I would think you would have, that you would want to have something that's, you know, more substantive than just a wall. You'd probably want, I don't know, maybe Italian cypress or something like that. I mean...
And if not that, perhaps bougainvillea, which is a flowering plant?
Is your concern with trying to prevent people from, not so much privacy, which is part of what we're trying to incorporate the others, but actual people trying to get over?
Correct.
Saying additional obstruction?
Correct.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, well, there's, I was misinterpreting where you were going with that, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's definitely some plant material applications. I mean, bougainvillea is obviously a very good one.
Yes.
That would be effective in achieving that. I have that on my own home, actually. Yeah, so we could definitely look at something along that on both the northeast and east side to put up against that wall to provide, you know, additional buffering and deterrent from people being able to get over that, get over that wall.
Absolutely. And then with regard to that parking lot in the front, I know at the last meeting, I think we had discussed that as an issue that some of the neighbors, particularly those across the street, had some concerns about, and I certainly share those concerns. It is sort of a, it is sort of a one-off that is, it's unfortunate, in my opinion, that that's part of the proposal. I'm not a huge fan of that aspect of it. Personally, I think it should be behind one of the buildings there. I know you had addressed at the last, at the last meeting, concerns about some drainage issues. as I understand it, that couldn't be addressed if the, if that, I think that's a, that's a six-plex right there? If that six-plex was moved toward the street, if memory serves me right, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And we did, you know, we took the concerns that were brought up and, you know, we looked at some screening on what we could do with that parking lot. But to your point, and I know you made that last, last meeting, and several homeowners did, neighbors brought that up in our recent discussions. And I've been working diligently with our engineers over the past week to see what we could do there. And there is an opportunity for us to shift that entire bank down so that the homes would be basically up on the front of the street, just like the five-plex. And we could move the drains. We'll be bucking great a little bit. But we haven't fully designed it, but my engineer is confident we can make that work. So that's, that's a concession. I wanted to get there all the way with the design, but I was literally talking to our engineer on the way over here today. This is something we've been playing with since, really since the last meeting, because I just can't emphasize drainage is a tough challenge on this side. It's very flat. And as a number of neighbors have brought up, you know, there are issues on Roland already. And we certainly don't want to add to that. So we've been very sensitive to how we're designing the underground chambers for this, for this project. That was a very effective solution. But what the engineers have come back to us with is incorporating some of those same chambers along the north-south street as we've done on the west side. And we can achieve some of the same benefit and meter those out through those chambers. So I'm confident we'll be able to make that revision in the plan. And I agree with you. I think that'll be a much better complement. It's, it's not something that we typically see on a lot of residential projects. So if we can bring that six-plex forward to the street, I think it'll interact much better for pedestrians and people across the street, having that architectural element.
Also, I'd like to add to Commissioner Lewis's comments regarding the parking. Any particular reasons why we're not aligning the house on the first row on Roland to line up with a setback with the current development that's existing right now?
Yeah.
You look toward the west side of the development, the houses right there, the setback, those are frontage setback. Why are we not lining up to the one, to their, right there? Why are we not pushed back a little bit to line up with the current existing neighbor's setback?
Again, we addressed these in the specific plan. It was really all of the setbacks. And I know setbacks have come up tonight in terms of, you know, we didn't concede on any of the setbacks, or we didn't give in on setbacks. But if you concede on the setbacks, we're losing units. I mean, it's really just a.
Well, I just want to address the fact that for this particular development, which is you're asking for 158 units and some of the resident had, had really concerned that they're existing in the surrounding house to the north, to the west, and also to the south, they're single residential, and they're eight acre, eight units per acre.
Right.
Now, you're asking us to practically double the units per acre for this particular area and change the zoning. You had to, not only this particular, you know, we're concentrating so much on the housing, how it looks. I mean, that's important. However, the main thing that we're really looking at in approval is the one, we're changing the code from civic, which is schools, to neighborhood medium. That's, that's really a big thing. Number two is that we're changing from single-family residential, which is R1, to Pacific Plan. So these, I know we spoke, I don't know, we spent three, four hours talking about the details of how this whole 150 units. But really, what you're looking for are these two main items, which is changing from civic, from school neighborhood to medium neighborhood, which is increasing the neighborhood in that area. At least, like Commissioner Lewis was, was concerned regarding the parking, push the parking, make it look somewhat similar to the existing neighborhood right now in the frontage area. And I'm sure, I know it's difficult, but there might be pump, or I don't know how the engineering work. I don't know how the water works. I mean, that water is important. But you need to come up with something that's to address the neighborhood and their concern as well, to see how we can address that. And we cannot, in a way, if we can push it to make it somewhat look like the neighborhood and blend in with existing neighborhood, we might be able to appease the neighbors who lives around here. You've seen them and you heard them. And it's not like we're not, we're not hearing them. We are hearing them. But you also need to understand that they're the one that's living there. And if it looks very different, you may give, I mean, this is a huge project and it's a huge cost to the company. But give them something that they're asking for to make it look somewhat like the neighborhood, even though it may not be, even though it may not be. However, that little item, you might have to address it, address that whole issue. Like, for example, the setback currently in the front setback that you have right now is, I'm not asking you to do all the 158 unit setback, similar to the existing setback. But at least from the lot, when you're looking at it, at least on Roland area, which is the frontage, at least line it up to the neighborhood right now. Or there are some development project, when you give it a little bit more parkway, it looks a little bit, it looks, it looks more residential. I understand that you needed the three stories is because you want to pack it more dense, put the parking lot on the bottom floor, the first floor. The second is the living room or kitchen area, and then the third is where the bedroom is. I understand that you need that to compact it more. However, you also need to provide the resident, especially the frontage, those home around there. Make it look, you know, not put a parking lot in front of it. You are addressing that issue. But also, at the same time, line the setback so that it, it, it works a little bit. The other thing regarding your, your plan that you'll be questing for in the existing plan now that we concentrated almost three to six hours now, looking at this plan, is that you addressed that there's only 40 feet height. But the Pacific Plan that you're asking for, it can go up to 45 feet. So that's what you're asking for. You cannot really well telling us that, hey, look, we're asking for, well, you are telling us, because this plan is 40 feet. However, you can go up to 45 feet. That's what you're asking for. You can't really kind of hide it in there. I mean, I am fine with the fact that you have combination of homes. Like, it's really nice that you actually take into consideration that the surrounding property to the north, to the west, and to the south. Not so much to the south, but you actually took into consideration to keep it two-story. That is really what the neighborhood is asking for. More into the commercial area, only one resident may be impacted because of a solo, her or his solo panel. So you might want to have some type of lighting. You're building at three stories, it may not block it, it may not block their solar panel between the distance of what you have and also their yard. There are light studies that you can do to show them that the tree or the building itself will not block their light, what do you call it? Solar?
Sunlight.
Power, sunlight power. I don't know. I don't even know what it's called. But that's only, I believe it's only one resident, because that's the R, the six, the six-plex right there. So that's something that we can address for those particular neighbor over there. And the area on the front, if you can really take into consideration, because there are neighborhood that lived there for a long time, we don't see it here on this particular plan. However, if you look a little bit to the left of Roland, the houses along that area, their setback in the frontage is a little deeper. But then you look across the street, their setback is a little deeper. I don't think it's too much to ask if we were to figure it out how to kind of line it up so it kind of blend into the neighborhood. That, that would be really nice. So again, I wanted to say that, you know, the zoning, the two zoning that you're asking for, that is what you're asking and you're looking for. Not so much of the, well, building two. However, when, once we approve this, it's really the two items right here. We're changing from civic, schools to neighborhood medium, and a zone change to, from single residential, which really on that area, again, I'm just repeating myself, is eight unit per acre. But you're asking for almost double that. I believe it's 15 or 20 per acre.
Fifty-eight units, yeah. So it's over 17 to the acre.
So it's 17. So it's, you know, it's quite a bit of change. And, and you, there's quite a few neighbors that come out and are really concerned about that impacting that area. And that's just one of the items that I have written down. So we're gonna, you know, we'll probably have more questions and other commissioners may have more questions as well. So those things also need to be addressed. In the meantime, does any other commissioner have questions?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Okay. After this one, we'd like to take a five-minute break. Mr. Brick?
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a question. So if we do a setback, and maybe city staff can answer this, if we do a setback, we will eliminate fire truck access. I believe under, under the law, a fire truck has to be able to go inside that complex. If we do a setback, we eliminate a fire truck's access to move in and move out of that access area of where that setback's gonna be. And I believe if I'm mistaken, your engineering department calculated and took into account the fire trucks and other mobile, mobile access items that were going to be going in there, like fire trucks, trash trucks and so forth. And so I just wanted to clarify that.
At the length, the length of every single motor court, the width of every street, I mean, everything has been calculated on this project by both the architect and the engineer. And it is a very site-specific product. And, you know, it is, it is a little different from what's adjacent as you head to the west. But what we've tried to do is incorporate some of those residential elements at the same, you know, same pedestrian story to have that, that same interaction with the street. So even if we can't achieve, you know, the full setback, we can still bring in some of those elements, still have those homes orient in a way that gives it the same, you know, general appearance of a typical residential neighborhood.
Thank you. And also, let's see. And the homeowners association rules on parking. Let's just say, Mr. City Attorney, if, let's just say, the homeowners association allowed overpacking of vehicles to occur, wouldn't that be the city's responsibility to use code enforcement to attack those issues under law?
No, because that's going to be in the private property. When they start spilling over, then of course.
Well, yes, what I'm referring to, if they're over-spilling vehicles and breaking code violations, obviously, we have a code enforcement department, right?
Right.
Great. And, let's see. And just to clarify, also, my question earlier regarding the stop sign. So I was asking city staff if there was going to be a stop sign on Roland. That was not my question. My question was, was there going to be a stop sign when the vehicles are exiting the complex? So they don't hit a pedestrian walking on the public sidewalk? So, and I think that answer is yes, correct? So just to clarify, there will be, my question was not asking about stop signs on Roland, but rather the vehicles exiting the new complex to ensure that the residents don't get run over when they're crossing the sidewalk from the public sidewalk right adjacent to the property line, that there is a stop sign so vehicles could stop and look both ways before doing their turn onto the street. Also, can city staff explain the regional housing mandate? Once again, just to clarify some questions earlier in regards to the city's requirement under the regional housing mandate?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Gutierrez. So the city is required to, as one of the speakers said, make, allow for the construction of, the city's not responsible for the actual construction of. And I think our number's a little bit over 5,000. I don't remember the exact amount. I know Joanne can provide that number. But we do have to make that was number of units available for construction somewhere within the city.
Great. And my other question is, and I do know that there's a lot of fast cars in that street, and I agree with the residents on that. So my question is, just to make sure all residents are informed and how this process works. Let's just say there's a resident who has an idea and says, you know what, there should be a crosswalk there. Or there should be a, maybe a stop sign right there on Roland. What's the process? What's the, which, what does a resident do to make that recommendation to the city? And which department should they call to submit a request and do a, and what's the process? I mean, so they could be very informed in how we're going to help our community.
So we do have a traffic committee. Any request for anything from making street parking to, from, to permitted street parking to looking at improvements to intersections goes through the traffic committee. And I think Janet can speak a little bit more to that process.
Great. Sorry, I can't answer that question. Thank you. And Paulina is correct. We do have a traffic commission that meets every month, the second Tuesday of every month. And public is welcome at this time, because of COVID, it's kind of a call-in thing. But we do, residents can write to the city, email or bring a note into the department, and it gets to us. And they can initiate an engineering review of certain traffic common, calming areas. And then we would take that request and start an engineering review, which could look at existing conditions, collisions, accidents, parking, what the issue is. After we have undertaken an initial review, then we take it, we make recommendations following guidelines, California MUTCD guidelines, California vehicle code. All, anything we recommend has to meet those standards. We take it to the traffic commission. The traffic commission has, the police department sits in, the city engineer, traffic, as well as public. They can discuss the item. If it's approved and the recommendations are approved, then it goes to council for final, final recommendations. In fact, we are doing, as a request of residents, at the western side of Roland, they did ask for us to review some traffic calming on Roland. So I know some of the residents have emailed me saying they noticed that we do have some tube counts being counted right now on the street. So we're looking at speed, we're looking at ADT so that we can start that, that process.
Great. And also another question, and that's great, and thank you for answering that. And I would encourage any resident watching here today and watching at home, that if you do have a recommendation about putting a street light there or crosswalk, that you, you use the system that the taxpayers have paid for. That's in place now. And that you do write a recommendation on what you believe that needs to be done for, if it's Roland or any street in the city of West Fuenen. Because city staff and, and this commission and the city council stays committed on hearing the voices of all residents. And I also have another question. Let's see. In regards to the regional housing mandate again, is there, I believe the number is 5,346 houses that we need to build in the next eight years, correct? Does that sound right? Yeah, okay, great. And so we, I mean, the city has a requirement. And as a planning commission, I think we need to take into consideration, hear the residents' concerns. And, and I think the Lewis company, like I said last time, the Lewis company is going all their way to be willing to work with us to hear the residents' concerns. And they have added. And, and they have added more greenery in the dead end. They have ensured that that's only a fire access exit and entrance. And in most cases, a fire truck will rather, rather not race its, waste its time by going the long way and putting the key in and, and code in and getting across the other side. In, in most instances, the fire truck will go on the main street and go right in. And, and so I think we have to remember that we, we as a city have a requirement on the housing mandate. And I think that this is one of the projects that's gonna make the city meet its requirement. And I think at the same time, we need to listen to the voters. And, and I think we have done a great job, and especially at our last meeting, in, in assuring that we shared ideas regarding a seven, a seven-feet wall by the commercial space area. I saw that in, in the design, can we put the design up with the two front designs of the, on Roland? How they, how they look? The one with the, there shows a three-story and the two stories? So, so in this design, if I'm not mistaken, if, if I'm across the street, right across the street from the, the house, the housing project, the housings on the top left will be on the left side, and the housing on the, the bottom, the bottom picture of that will be on the right side, which, if I'm not mistaken, you took into consideration that the taller buildings will be mostly, mostly in the view of commercial spaces. And that the other two-story houses will be mostly in the view of the residential areas across the street. And, and that's a great consideration that you took into effect, and I thank you for doing that, because the residents' views are, are, I mean, their, their views from their houses that they invested in for so many years is so important. And I think the Lewis company for making a design that inputted that aspect into this project. And I thank you for that. And, and hopefully later, later in this meeting, and my colleagues will, will, will make a decision that's best for everyone. And, and I think that we need to take into considerations what the residents want, and which we are and I am. And, and I think my last, at the last meeting, that's why I, I agree to, that we should put seven-feet walls on the commercial space areas and the, in the dead end area on Eileen Street, that we should put beautiful greenery there, so the houses on the opposite side of Eileen could see a dead-end street, no longer dead grass or, or fencing. They'll be seeing a beautiful, beautiful greenery wall that enhances their street. And, and they'll see a middle, a middle entrance just for fire trucks in case of the worst, worst scenarios that could happen. And, and so I thank you for answering my questions.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Sorry, I think we have Commissioner Basara that has some questions.
Okay, thank you. And after her, we're gonna take a restroom break for five minutes. Thank you.
I just asked her to unmute herself, so. We'll give her a couple seconds as well.
If, if, when she gets back, we can continue. Just let me know when she gets back on the phone. So basically, I want to, I do have another questions for our developer as well. Residents are very concerned about traffic. To some extent, we may not be able to do much about traffic, to some extent. But parking, they're also concerned about parking. When you have a development that's 158 units, majority of the houses over there require two parking each unit. And however, if you have larger unit, they normally require three-plus parking. In these situations right now, I'm just asking, with, currently, you were giving us how many parking total? Parking, not guest parking, the parking in the unit itself, because we had 158 units.
So it's 116.
Two, 316 parking, right?
Plus 99 additional spaces, so we're exceeding the standard.
But, so taking that into consideration, is total of, let's say that if it's 158 times three, that's 474 units. And you provided 415 units? Parking spaces, total?
Yes.
When you say you're exceeding the parking spaces, I just wanted to clarify, because some development in a single residential area, if we have so many bedrooms, we're required to add more parking space. It's not all across the board that is two-bedroom that is, that are needed for each unit. But in your, for this particular development, you just come up with two units, I mean, two spaces for each unit. That means 316. However, if you were to do four, three parking spaces per unit, that brings us up to 475 units. 475? That's just regular parking. However, you included the guests, which is 316 plus the 415, I'm sorry, 316 plus the 99? You come up to be 415. So in a true sense, that might be to, residents might be, seems a little shortage of parking space. Is there any way that you can take a look at your plan and somehow? Find for more parking space over there?
We are, we are consistent with the, the city standard. I guess that's what I'm saying. We designed based on the city standard, and we exceed what's required in the SP as well by 20 spaces.
Well, I understand that you said a city standards, however, this is a zone code change. So we're basically scrapping everything and come up with new, new parking requirements for this particular plan.
Correct.
So from what, your statement saying you'll be, you're trying to fulfill what the city code is, we don't even have a code for this particular project. We're trying to come up with some type of, some type of, you can say work together with the neighbors to satisfy some of the neighbors, some of this area. I understand that it is higher already. We're bringing normally the heights of West Covina for single residential in this particular area, it's only 25 feet. You, you know that more than us. We're, we're, if we were to prove it, this plan will go up to 45 feet. That increase of height, can you compensate it somehow to provide more parking?
Yeah, what, I'm sorry.
I, I.
The point was that we're, we're exceeding both the existing, for the type of product that we're building, we're, we're exceeding the existing city standard and the specific plan requires, so the proposed, even the proposed plan that we have with the new criteria, we're exceeding that also by 20 units. So we're already above the, the new standard as well.
So for the three, but, for example, three or four bedrooms in the city of West Covina, Joanne, staff, can you please tell us what are the requirement for, for those type of single residential development? How many garages are we, do we need?
In, in the R1 zone?
Yes.
Okay, so.
In that particular area, the surrounding area over there for the R1 zone?
In the R1 zone, a two-car garage is required. That's at least 20 by 20 if they, if they have less than, not more than four bedrooms.
Okay, so if it's a four-bedroom, then we are required more parking?
No, if it's a five-bedroom, then a three-car garage is required.
Five-bedroom is three-car garages. And then all these developments are under four bedrooms?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And, and also.
And, and so they're, they're meeting the, the city's law standards under the code.
And also, sorry.
Surpassing it, right?
For the garage space, yes.
For the garage space?
And also in the city's, in the city's R1 standards, in addition to the garage space, a two-car garage is required, I'm sorry, a two-car park, parking space is required on the driveway as well, so.
So for.
That's in the R1.
Development area, you're saying you need two garage spaces?
Yes, parking space.
Inside the house are covered. Then two uncovered.
Uncovered parking space on the driveway. Yes, that's in the R1 code, though.
Okay.
Not, not the product type, you're talking about the R1 designation.
That's R, that's R1. So that's, it's like, you, can you see what the residents' concerns are? Because they do live in the R1 zone, and I understand this particular lot is very unique in a sense that right next to it, it's commercial. I always understand that. I also understand that four, three of the sizes of this particular property are single residential. So the residents' concerns, you know, if you live in Westward, it's, Alvis is more packed. And there are some area that you had to walk three, four blocks, you will park, because there's no parking space. You will park three, four blocks and then walk down to wherever you need to get to it. So in this case, you know, they're kinda, the residents are seeing that this might be an impact to their, to where they're living. And I hope you see that. And I, I, I understand that you are saying that, okay, we're doing as much as we can for what the cities are asking for, but at the same time, we haven't changed the code to fit your needs. For example, yes, you're giving us two parking spaces, but that's the minimum parking space. There's no guest parking space. In this case, with regarding the calculation, you need four per unit. Just two in the cover and two in the front, not cover. So really, how many is that? So can you meet somewhere and address this to the resident? Come up with something. We're not saying that, it's, it's a beautiful project. I'm not saying it's not a beautiful project. And by the way, Commissioner Gutierrez, I do, and all commissioner here and staff, we all understand that, oh, the state of California and the city of West Covina, we are required to add units. Give us beautiful units. We will give you the units. It's not like we're not gonna be working with you.
I don't think we can make decisions based upon our personal belief. We have to follow the law, and we cannot continue to make decisions on our personal.
We are making those, we are making. Number one.
And then at the end of the day, we have to remember also that it's, if, if the residents, we, I don't think it's fair that we continue to postpone these meetings and, and draw off, I mean, there's people, there's people who need housing. If you go on, online, there's no housing, where are you minimum housing? There was thousands and thousands, I mean, how many notices went out, city staff, regarding this project?
It went out to the neighbors within 300 feet radius.
So do we know how many, how many of those? Over a thousand or what? Oh, how many people was on?
I think it was around 60.
60 people?
Yeah, we'll confirm the.
Okay. But in, in the city of West Covina, we have over 103, 100,000 people. And how many people, how many people have spoken against this project?
At the last meeting, 16.
16? 16 of the 100 and, over 103, 100,000 people of the city have spoken against this? Okay. And so, so yeah, so I, so I, I think it's fair, I mean, I think we have to become to our senses and, and make a decision. We can, we either tell them yes, or we either tell them no, because at the end of the day, they need to take the next step and go to the, either go to the city council or, or our community needs to go to the city council and ask for appeal, or, or they need to go. I don't think it's fair that we continue as a commission, a planning commission, we hold this project. I don't think it's fair at all.
Well, we haven't voted on any decisions yet, so fair or unfairness is not up to discussion at this moment. We are having a discussion.
Yes, I agree. I just, I'm just saying that we're running out, we're running out of time. It's almost.
We're not running out of time. There's no time limit per se. We need to get this, and we need to get it heard by the public and also, also among the commissioners. And if commissioners has questions, we need to continue on.
Yes, I, I agree. And I'm just saying that.
I'm sorry.
We have to take into consideration that if 16 people spoke of the 103, 100,000 people who live in our city, we have to take, we have to take into consideration. Thank you.
Commissioner Lewis, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, Chair, if I may answer.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
There were 59 people that live within 300 feet of the subject property. Those are the people that received notification.
Okay.
For the hearing notice.
So 59 people got notices and only 16 are speaking against it?
And in addition, and also in, sorry, in addition to the public hearing notices that staff mailed out, they also published a hearing notice in the newspaper, on the city's website, and also on the site.
So a majority, it's safe to say that a majority of the residents who were notified did not speak against this project tonight or the last meeting, correct?
Commissioner Gutierrez, we're not making a vote right now. I understand.
I'm just, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking for a vote.
We are having a discussion.
I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
And we're having questions for our developer and applicant.
Just to clarify my answers and the questions. So a majority of the, I'm, I'm, sorry, the majority of the residents who got notices did not come and speak on this matter. They got notices, the city did its job, just to clarify that, thank you.
Commissioner Livia Basara online yet?
She, she is not able to connect, so she said it's fine.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, I, I did have some additional questions. So one of the things that, that, that we had discussed at the, at the last hearing was, I think, clara, clerestory windows with regard to the back, the back view of the single-family detached and attached units. Question I had was, I think there's two units up, yeah, those two units right there. Previously, I, I think there was, I, I think at one point in time, we had discussed potentially making a requirement that, that those, because of the orientation, would have the, the clerestory windows there as well. I, and I, and I think that, that was an issue that, that somebody brought up that wasn't actually covered by, by your prior design, which I, I, I do agree, thoughtfully considered that aspect of things.
Yeah, and part of, part of that was the, obviously, the proximity on the north side of how close, you know, with that side on condition.
Right.
Whereas, whereas there's a, you know, bigger separation with the units up there in that, that area you're referring to. We can, we can look at that. I have talked to those neighbors, you know, the, part of the driving force of us making that change was in response to feedback from those neighbors that we spoke to at the meeting. That, that was what drove those changes, so.
I, I, I think the, I think the only thing that, that was concerning about that aspect of things, at least, at least from, from my perspective, is that it, it just, and, and I, I don't think anyone did this intentionally, but I think those two units didn't include changes, if memory serves me right.
No, that's, that's a fair statement. That, those two units, we did not make modifications on, on those sides to those. And, and I can take a look at that also, we haven't looked at those in that same, same light, only again, because the, the neighbors on the other side were the ones that brought it up on those particular plans, so it was just something we didn't look at. But be happy to, to put some focus on those two particular plan types and see what we can do with those windows.
To add on to those clerestories that Commissioner Lewis had, also on the sixth unit next to the neighbors up there, they had mentioned regarding, you know, their privacy as well. Is there anything you can do that on the six plex north corner, northeast corner? Thank you, Joanne.
There's, that's commercial.
That's commercial?
Yeah.
So one of the, one of the resident along the northern side, I forgot which one it was. If you, you know, because it's so tight, I'm not sure which one. Oh, maybe it's closer to the code is at.
Yeah.
You can look into it.
I've met with, I've met with that gentleman there, and that, again, that was one of the reasons why we modified the, the windows on that.
So if you can make sure those are taken care of as well?
Certainly.
One of the items that I actually have also, I had asked and we have barely started talking about, is the personal space. I understand that you give a little park, somewhat of a park inside, but a personal space for, for these units. How many have a balcony and how many does not out of all these units?
You know, there's a, there's a mix within the, the products. I'd have to, you know, go by a plan. But there's a variety of, you know, both porches and patios and decks within those plans that offer a variety. And then some of the units, as you can see, have, you know, considerable yards. Even, even on the five plex and six plex units, you can see the end units have a pretty good usable space.
Yes, the end units, it seems like you do have, and because of the yards and also the setback that you have to fulfill that requirement. However, can you pull that units up, the inner units between the two? Can you pull the setback plan, the original one? There. I don't think those units have any space, personal space.
They would have like a, a private, like a courtyard area or, or deck area that are incorporated into those plans. But yeah, they don't, they don't have like a rear yard, if that's what you're referring to.
No, a personal space if it's a deck or, is that? Sorry. So those units, I can't really tell to see if they have, you know, some, some sort of personal space. Because you mentioned that there is going to be, you know, people who lives in there might have dogs and it's nice to have personally. Otherwise, you don't want them to be walking all around the neighborhood and leaving extra stuff for the neighbors.
Sure. Yeah, no, there are porches and covered decks. It just, it's, it's plan by plan. If you look at some of the, the second floor components there and the first floor components, you can see where they are.
I'd like to know how many do not have those personal space. Because I felt like since it's a compacted unit, we really knew, need to look into a little bit of something for them.
Yeah, I mean, I can get you an itemized breakdown of those products for you. But every unit has either a covered deck or porch or a combination thereof and a minimum private space. And that's per the, and again, that's per the specific plan. So I mean, these have all been developed with a specific plan. So if you, if you review the, the criteria there and the, the package, all of these plans have been designed to specifically meet those design guidelines of the specific plan. I mean, it is, it is possible to do it on some projects, but now you're introducing stacking and all types of, of different traffic interactions that need to happen in each one of those entries. And we purposely designed this without electronic gates. And honestly, I don't know if a gate would be a good, you know, visual appearance there along Roland at these entries to have, you know, a right iron gate running across those two driveways.
School hasn't been open for 40 years, so that's like a park for them. So obviously, there's not a lot of noise besides the people who go in there and play. I don't know if you can get through the gates. But can you address some of the issues that they have regarding, because we pack so many units and how the AC will be aligning? And will that affect the whole area? And also, with the increase of the block wall, will that reduce the noise a little bit?
Well, yeah.
Where are the AC being placed?
A couple barriers, right? So we're going to have a vinyl fence that's going to enclose those yards around the homes around the perimeter. Then you're going to have the buffer, seven and a half foot landscape buffer. And then you're going to have a block wall. So there's quite a bit of sound buffering that's going on between those units. But even beyond that, the, if you guys have heard, the units of new homes, they're dramatically different from probably what you and I have on our homes or what the surrounding neighbors have. Everything, you know, a lot of the, you, you were mentioning the building code earlier. You know, with the building code, there's a lot of changes and one of those are like the variable, variable speed pumps, kind of like swimming pools have, where, you know, when it's, it used to be you either were off or running at that high whining speed of that motor. Now they drop down and, and could run at a much quieter sound. So that's, that's part of what's in the building code.
Yes.
And so
Can you?
air conditioning units are far quieter than, you know, they were even 10 years ago.
I believe it's also depending on what, how much you're going to willing to be paying for. I'm just really, since the neighbors are concerned regarding the perimeter of this particular project, which is the north and the west side. So I was wondering if you can take into consideration and take that into consideration. And then the other ACs, where you put it and what type you put it, I don't, you know. Right?
Yeah.
So if you can address those, just the northern part and then the, what's that, west side of those building? The one closest to the neighbors. I'm not saying, you know, I don't know what you're going to do with all of them. But there will be quite a few units. And some of these units, I understand it's the new machines, it's, it's less, it's more quiet, but it also depend on how much you.
No, you're, you're right. I'm just, all I'm guaranteeing is you will hear your neighbors on your side more than you will these, that's all.
I understand. Thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry, if I can interject again. I think we have fixed the issue and Commissioner Basera would like to ask her question.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Question regarding the incentive for purchasing homes there. With regard to the incentive, could that incentive go to West Covina residents? I mean, I know that you had it for a certain group of people, public servants.
Yes, and I'm sorry, you may have missed that at the beginning, but we're trying to make that.
Sorry, I had to walk out of the room. I'm echoing over here. So I, you know, I was just wondering if there was some incentive where West Covina residents could benefit, because there is such a low supply and high demand where, you know, it's very hard to, for anyone to purchase a home nowadays. So that being said, would it be, you know, where would the, West Covina residents would be, you know, ahead of the list? Or, or get a special incentive, the buying incentive, which it's not a down payment, it's a, it's a buy, buy incentive. And because there's such a delay, I'm just going to throw in another question. Would the complex be FHA approved to make it more easy, you know, for qualifying?
I think that concludes your question.
Yeah, I mean, in terms, we're, we're trying to broaden the, as we spoke of earlier, the program relative to 150,000 as, as much as we can. And I think making that category to include West Covina residents would be an important one to add to that. And again, this is something that we're completely open to working on with the city. This was kind of the, the brainchild of, of both partners here in putting that together. So we're completely open to working with staff to, to craft those so that it's, you know, in, in a format that you guys want to see. And then as far as FHA, obviously, it'll be driven, driven by the, the price points. But certainly, I mean, obviously, the, the builder here will be highly incentivized to, you know, work closely in, you know, making sure that people can qualify. And there's a lot of clarity with those, with those requirements.
Chair, if I may, answer one of the questions that you have asked Mr. Crosby earlier regarding the private open space for the, the three-story townhomes. Okay, so on, on the projector, I have the floor plan, the second floor plan of the three-story townhomes. It's easier to see. And then the, and then the first floor, floor plan. So as you can see, only, only Plan 3 does not have the, it does have a, a smaller private porch. But only Plan 3 does not have the, the deck space that is shown on the other, on Plans 1 and 2. So all, all other units, with the exception of Plan 3, have, have deck areas on the second floor. And if, let me go back to.
And the table, not to interrupt you, Joanne, but yeah, the table over there on the right-hand side of that graphic
Yes.
identifies the porch versus deck area for each one of those plans at the specific floor level.
And als, and also if you, each, each, I guess, cluster only has one Plan 3 unit within it. So there are 17 clusters. So there are, there are 17 units in total that do not have the deck space.
Thank you.
All other units do.
One question, which I did understand the residents concerned about the amount of open space being provided in the development, given the number of units. In light of the pandemic, I believe people now realize how important it is to have some type of outdoor space to be able to walk. I did observe that 10,000 square feet and when you have more than 500 people, we understand that that's an amenity. But at the same time, I also noticed for the three-story townhomes, the walkable area that you have, I guess it's at least four feet, that's paved and so forth. But going back over towards the single family, some of those walkways are only three feet.
Are you just talking about the paseos that go down through the, yeah, the middle of the, of the project? That's, that's really driven largely by the design separation of the product? But the, that's just the paseo width of, of the walking path, but there's still the same, you know, it's broader distance between the building units. It's just more green space than it is sidewalk.
Right, but again, if, if you were to have someone that's wheelchair, I was a little surprised that you still wouldn't have provided at least a four-foot walkway even in that paseo area.
Okay, we can take a look at that. I mean, that's, this is, this is a, this is a product that's been very well received in, in a number of jurisdictions. And, you know, that's not, not an issue that's been raised, but we can certainly take a look at that.
Okay.
Commissioner Lewis?
So I, I, I had a number of questions and I think somehow we got a little off track. Anyway, was gonna, was gonna ask, going back to the, to the, to the screening trees, just, just wanted to ask, what, what was, what is the proposal in terms of the maturity of, of those trees that, that are going to be put in? Is, is it going to be a situation where there, there will be privacy in the future after, after they would be put in hypothetically? Or is this a, a situation where we would, we'd be faced with mature trees going in, providing screening? It's a, I, I think it's a question that I, I think every, every single person here would probably want to, want an answer on.
Yeah, no, it's a fair question and one that we've, we've looked at from the beginning. We actually even thought about doing some type of contract grow. But yeah, they will be of a sufficient size that they have immediate impact. It's not going to be, if you've seen potocarpus at, at nurseries and, and stuff, they're, they obviously are in different size boxes, as they call them, planting containers. But potocarpus can actually grow up to 30 or 40 feet if you let them, if you let them go. But there is a fine line between the size that you want to, want to purchase before it gets to a point where it's basically grown accustomed to growing in that box. And it kind of stifles it where it takes a little time to get started again. So I mean, they will be, we're not going to plant, if the concern is, are we going to go out there and plant three-foot shrubs?
Right.
We're definitely not proposing that in any way, shape, or form. They're going to be up there with the, with the height of the wall. But it is advantageous to, to not put in species that are too big. Again, they, they actually start to get acclimated to their plant box and they almost don't grow for two, two years just because, you know, they're so used to growing in that container. So, but they will be of sufficient size that they have immediate impact. They're not going to be little, you know, one gallon plants that we're putting along the wall that everybody's going to have to wait, you know, 10 years for. And that's one of the reasons why we picked this species. It's a very fast-growing plant. I have, I have one on, on my property. I literally hack it down about three, three feet or so at least twice a year. I mean, it grows very fast.
And then with regard to, sort of the same thing, and I, I know we, I know we kind of talked about this sort of in a hypothetical sense. But, but with regard to that, that north, I guess this would be the northeastern portion on down to, to the front with regard to some sort of coverage there. I, I assume you'd probably be looking at the same thing with whatever, whatever hypothetical choice would, would be made on that, assuming that that was amenable.
Yeah, something that we could immediately get established onto the, onto the wall.
Right. And then I, I had a couple of questions with regard to, with regard to the HOA and, and I, I assume you guys are doing CCNRs as well.
Absolutely.
So, so with regard to the, the trash receptacles, I know that was brought up many times by a number of residents. They don't want to see the trash receptacles. And I, I, I think there was a discussion about potentially having, having it in both the, the, the house rules for, for the HOA as well as maybe in the CCNRs, that you have to put your trash receptacles in, in front of your garage kind of thing, whenever, whenever there's a, a trash pickup. I, I think, was, is that, is that something that, that, that is, that is, that is agreeable in your proposal?
I believe we can accommodate that in the governing documents to the extent that, you know, we can require that they go out, you know, the night before and be brought in the day of so that they're not left out.
Right.
You know, in, in the public view. What, what we can't control is just the discretion of the, the refuse companies in terms of, you know, their, their pickup location and timing. But, you know, we will, we will coordinate with them. But that's, that's something we can certainly incorporate into the, the governing documents. And that's becoming more and more standard.
Right.
In a lot of projects, even though, you know, in my neighborhood, a lot of people leave their trashcans out. But in an HOA, that's one of the reasons why we have that, you know, is to preserve property values and make sure some of those little things that become an eyesore or pain for a lot of us are taken care of.
And, and then with regard to the actual storage of the, of the, here, here we have two, two trash bins. We have the, the green and the, and, and the, and the black bin here. So question, are, are you creating a designated storage area in the garage for them?
Yes.
Okay. So, so there's, there's going to be some sort of specific storage closet or something like?
Yeah, they're, well, they're called out in the, the garage plan there on that.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make that clear for, for, for the residents who are, who are listening or watching, that that is part of, part of your proposal.
And that's, and to your, to your earlier point, that's also enforceable, you know, by the, by the association in terms of, you know, if people don't put them away or try to store them out front of their garage or on the side, obviously, that's in, would be subject to fine by the homeowners association.
And then, and then with regard to, to parking, I, I know, I, I know Chair Hang had a, had, had a long discussion with you about, about parking considerations. Is, is there, have, have you guys ever had issues that, or ever had a jurisdiction impose a requirement that, you know, there's, there's covenants that, that are granted to adjacent property owners with regard to parking restrictions and, and enforcing a private right of action? Have you ever seen anything along those lines?
So, so are you referring to if, if the residents from this community parked in the adjacent neighborhood? Yeah, I, I have not, I've seen, I have not seen that. We have had some projects where, you know, a city has no parking, period, on, on certain streets adjacent to communities. Probably. Um, probably in an effort to prevent some of that, uh, overflow. Um, so, so that's something, although I, I don't know how you make the distinction, uh, aside from permits like they do, like in Pasadena and other areas where you, you know, have, have permits for the existing residents so that you can make the distinction for whoever's enforcing, uh, parking.
I mean, we, we, we have, um, we have a program in West Covina that, that allows neighbors to get together and create, uh, sort of private, private parking zones, basically. So that, you know, if, if, if the neighbors don't ha- have such a concern about, um, you know, things that, uh, let's put it this way, certain, certain businesses or certain government entities having, uh, having overflow into their neighborhoods, they can create, uh, parking restrictions. This is actually something that, uh, I'm very familiar with. Um, Holly Place, um, and, and Cameron is, is a place where they've done it for years and years. And, uh, I assume it's making lots of money for the city whenever the EMV reopens.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen it in Claremont and Upland and a lot of other neighboring communities. So I'm sure it's something that's, uh, achievable.
Yeah, right, um, and then, let's see. Oh, um, with regard to, um, with, with regard to utilities, um, obviously you're doing underground utilities and, and everything. Question I had is, um, what are you doing to accommodate for, uh, fiber optic installation and, and things along those lines? Obviously, um, West Covina has Frontier and Spectrum. I, I don't know if you guys are, um, have any plans in terms of how you, how you would deal with that.
Yeah, we are, we are, as you mentioned, we are doing the undergrounding, we are doing the Rule Twenty there, uh, across the frontage to, to underground the, the poles, uh, that are there. And then working with our, uh, utility consultant. I'm not specifically up to speed on which provider to the extent of what they have in terms of whether fiber is available, uh, here at this location, uh, specifically.
I mean, absolutely should have.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's terrible that a lot of older complexes don't have that option. If we're building something new in this city, it oughta have everything.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if it's, if it's something that's available, it's, you know, it's certainly, uh, generally incorporated. And the stuff that, uh, some of the new builders are doing would just blow your minds with terms of connectivity, uh, for these homes. They have these, you know, motherboards that are incorporated. I mean, you can plug anything into anywhere in that room, Cat Six cable, everything, and you're, you're full speed. None of these issues we're running into here tonight.
Uh-uh.
Um, it's, it's, no offense. It's, it's phenomenal, and, and this, this project will be no exception. I just meant whether it was available in the city.
Yeah, no, I.
Some of, some of them, uh, they haven't extended to certain areas, so they're, they're not available, uh, in certain locations. I, I'm a victim of that myself. Uh, they stopped it literally the community next to me, and, uh, we never got fiber, uh, where I live, so. But yeah, to the extent that's available.
Do you, I mean, just, just curious, have you guys, um, have you guys ever paid for sort of a last mile build-out? Or that kinda thing?
Um, you know, on big master plans, we've looked at a number of different alternatives when we've been trying to do that. You know, those are bigger scope projects, uh, where we have, you know, huge clubhouses and, and things of that nature, where we have, you know, central, uh, amenities and, and parks and, and schools and things incorporated where, uh, it has, it has made sense. Um, but like I said, I'll take a look at it, I honestly don't know off the, the top of my head, but, uh, we do have a u- utility consultant that's working very closely with this, with us on this project. Uh, so I will investigate that and, and confirm, you know, the closest proximity.
Um, just, just so I, uh, address this, I, I, I read a couple and heard a couple of comments about, you know, heat island effect. And, uh, I, I, I know Commissioner Williams had, had asked about that, um, as well. Uh, but I, I, I did wanna ask, are, are there any, um, you know, reflective materials or anything like that? Or cool, you know, cool roof materials or, or, or things like that being used in, in this development? I, I understand that's fairly typical for?
Yeah, that, that is, that is fairly typical nowadays. And again, you know, a lot of the building code, uh, the upgrades, I mean, there, there were significant costs, significant costs associated with this last, uh, building code upgrade, and a lot of those things are being, uh, incorporated. So, yeah, it makes a big difference both to the external, uh, and the internal. You know, a lot of that radiant heat isn't, uh, you know, going through the, uh, roof anymore like it, like it used to with the radiant barriers and those types of things. So, yeah, those, those will certainly be, uh, incorporated into the project.
Is that only taken to consideration on the roof only, or also the walls as well?
Well, it's, it's based on the, it's based largely on the, the building code. There's not, there's not a lot that's done. I mean, the insulation was also upgraded with the, this most current building code, so that's certainly, uh, preventing a lot of the heat transfer, uh, through the walls into the interior of the house. So, uh, insulation upgrade will also be, uh, incorporated.
Thank you.
What was the, the thing you were talking about, about the parking? About your, you're working with your engineer about? About the front parking? Were you, were you gonna be able to move it behind the building?
Well, I'm sorry, with that, with that front, uh, parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so what we would be, uh, looking at is basically pulling that, that sixplex forward so that it's basically on the street.
Hmm.
And has the same, uh, the same visibility that you would across the entire front. So instead of having that little cutout for the parking. And then we'll move the parking, uh, probably up to the top of that entire string, so up close to where the park is.
Okay, great. And, okay, and you, and that is possible to do?
Yeah, like I said, I was, I was on our, on a call with our engineer literally up, up until the, the point where I got here today. But he was pretty confident we were gonna be able to make that, that change, and I.
Great, that's great. That's, that's, uh, that's, uh, yeah, that's really huge, especially for the residents who voice concerns about parking that, um, the Lewis company's gonna be able to move that parking that's right in front to even, to further, further back in, in the, in the whole complex, which you won't be able to see, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, that was the reason we kept digging into that. Honestly, it wasn't, wasn't something that even caught, caught my eye when, uh, we went through it. We had even played with the park and some other things earlier on, but we're just concerned with what might happen, uh, out there with, with having the park too close to the street. Um, but yeah, until, until it came up with some of the, the neighbors, um, that honestly wasn't something we had really scrutinized, so, yeah, I'm glad that's something we can accommodate.
Great. So I, I would like to make a motion, um, that we approve staff recommendation of the Planning Commission to adopt Resolution Number Twenty-One dash six zero six eight, uh, comma, two one dash six zero six nine, comma, two one dash six zero seven zero, comma, two zero, two one dash six zero seven one, comma, two one dash six zero seven two, recommending that the City Council adopt the precise plan number, nu- number two zero dash zero one, and the tree removal permit number two zero dash one four, the tentative track map number eight three one three four, of the general plan amendment two zero dash zero one, and zone change number two zero dash zero two, and to certify the migrated negative decoration, and amending with the developer's commitment to move that one building up front to the, to the property line or to, to the adjacent building, and move the parking towards the back of, of the, the whole complex.
Thank you for your motion. Um, if we have a second, please let me know. And I, before we have a second, um, I'd like to, one, close public hearing. And then after this time, we're gonna have commissioner discussion. So do I have a second here? If not, we're gonna move on to close the public hearing and then, um, open commission discussions.
I, I have a, just sort of a practical question. Um, if that is going to be moved, and, and I think this would be a question for the city attorney, if that's going to be moved, how are we going to be able to do a tract designation? That's the, that's the only question I have. Um, if, if we're, if, if we're moving to approve this and, and the, and, and the, uh, 'cause I, these are all being subdivided, is my understanding, right? So, well, there, there are individual tracks for each of the... Yeah, and it. Right, right. And so what I'm, what I'm getting at is, since, since that, that front unit would have to be moved back, are, are we able to, would we be able to do that without having a specific plan brought back that shows that?
Yes, it'll still be within the pod of the, of the lots that we've created on the tentative map. And if not, it'll be a very minor, uh, modification. But yeah, it'll still fit within, you can see the modules, uh, it'll still fit within the module of the tentative map.
All right, that, that was, that was the question I had, just so that I have some clarification. 'Cause ob- obviously, I, 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 I understand that, wanna just make sure that, um, everyone's on the same page, but.
And that's, and, and, and of course, that's still going through, um, you know, there are, there are plan checks and things that will go along, uh, with that too. So there's always some refinements that happen through the, the process of going through the engineering department with our, with the plans.
Got it, okay.
There, there's quite a few items on this one, so you can make motions to make the adjustment for the parking, to adjust it.
Right.
And then, um, we can, when we have a discussions, we can also vote on that, on each line items, to see which one we are, um, when we have the discussions, which motions are we gonna approve? Like you can motion to approve subject to the garage parking, moving back and what have you. So if, um.
If they may, um.
So, wait, hold on. So are we, uh, I'm closing the public hearing right now? So I'm gonna close it, and do I have a second for Commissioner Gutierrez? If not, we just make another motion? And, um, open, um, commission discussion? Hold on, we've been trying to get a bathroom break for an hour now, so we'll take five minutes bathroom break, and we'll come back with, um, commission discussions. Five minutes, thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Okay, um, thank you for the breaks, everyone. So we are, um, just before the break, we close the public hearing and open for commission discussions. But prior to that, the discussions and closing public hearing meeting, we have a motion by Brian Gutierrez. And, um, Brian, would you like to make that motion again?
Uh, yes, um, let's see. Yeah, I believe there was a second by Commissioner Becerra, but, um, let's see. I can find my paper. Okay, um, so I will, uh, so just to clarify my motion, and, and, and if Commissioner Becerra agrees with a second, but, um, so what I indicated, and, and staff could, uh, reread it and, and put all the, and, and, put all the information, it needs to be said on, on, on public record. But, um, under the general, my motion is, um, I make a motion, uh, that the Planning Commission adopt Resolutions Number Twenty-One dash six zero six eight, comma, two one dash six zero six nine, comma, two one dash six zero seven zero, comma, two one dash six zero seven one, comma, two one dash six zero seven two, comma, recommending that the City Council adopt precise plan number three zero dash zero one, that, comma, tree removal permit number two zero dash one four, tentative track map number eight three one three four, general plan amendment number two zero dash zero one, and zone change number two zero dash zero two, and certify the migrated negative decoration, amending, uh, with, with amendments, and staff can clarify the amendments, uh, which also includes moving the parking lot to the back of the complex and moving that, moving the, the right side unit more to match the, the adjacent building. And, um, that's my motion.
Thank you. And, um, before we went on a break, we also have, uh, Brian Gutierrez make the motions, and we also have a, a second by Zoom, Commissioner, um, Livia Becerra. And we also, um, I also like to ask to see if all other planning commissioners have mo- another motions to make. Um, Brian make all the motions. This is a recommendations to go to, it's not any approval of anything, it's a recommendations to go to City Council. And, um, other commissioners, do we have another motion to, um, regarding this plan? Or we go through all the items? Or do you wanna have an open dis- uh, commission discussion first?
So I, I, I'd like to just discuss some of the, uh, some of the additional, um, additional things that, that we discussed with the applicant. And if, if, if we're, if we're going that route, um, at, at the very least, I, I would certainly like to see that, uh, that, that some of the, the matters that we discussed be incorporated with that as, with that motion as well. Um, if, if, if that's amenable, like for example, with regard to the, to, to the screening, um, uh, requirements that, that were discussed with regard to the, the north and the, and the eastern, um, portions of the property, with regard to just ensuring that the, um, plants and trees that are, that are, that are put in have, are, are at sufficient maturity to provide enough, uh, 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 enough screening and blockage to, uh, to, to accommodate i- immediate, um, I guess immediate screening for, for the, the neighbors there. Um, would, would like to see, um, the, uh, the, the CCNRs and the, and the HOA rules, uh, require that the, uh, that the, 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 uh, the trashcans be, be placed in the receptacles within twenty, within twenty-four hours after being put out. Um, and obviously, like, that would be something that should be subject to some, some form of fine if that does not occur. Um, I would, I would also like to see that, uh, with, with regard to the, the housing allowance, I, I, I would like to, to see that we, we add in, um, maybe a preference for, for West Covina renters who are looking to become property owners in this city. Um, if that's, if, if that's, uh, what we're going to do. The, the rear windows that, that were discussed for those, uh, for those two units, that I believe it would be the second and the third unit, um, from the most northwestern corners, that those be, uh, clear story windows, um, that, that are in the back that, that face the, the properties. I would, I'd like to, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see that, uh, that best efforts are made to ensure that, uh, that, that, uh, fiber optic, uh, options are, are provided to the, uh, the residents there. Um, and, uh, I, I would also like to see if, uh, if at all possible that, uh, in the parking area, there is, uh, there, there is, uh, two twenty hookups potentially for, uh, electric vehicle charging stations that can be added at a later date depending on what the, um, what the, wh- what the flavor of the week is, whether it's Tesla or, or whoever it is. Um, you know, unfortunately, there's no uniform standard, and, and obviously I'd like to see, um, that option there for residents or guests or, or whomever. And, uh, I think that would be what I would propose to.
Okay. Do you, do you think that's possible?
Yeah, I'm not, although, I'm, I am, uh, comfortable with everything except for the, I, I'm not that familiar with the EV hu- hookups. You know, that's something we deal with more on the retail side of things.
Not, not anything specific, just so that you guys are, are putting in infrastructure that will allow that to be added by the HOA at a later date.
Yeah, so basically, so it has the facilities wired to that location so that they could be.
Right, so it's just a matter of putting in whatever charging station that, that the, uh, the HOA agrees upon.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, uh.
I believe also.
So I would like, oh, sorry.
In LA County had already made that adjustment. I think, um, I'm not sure if the, uh, West, uh, West Covina had that in our code, but LA County and LA City. I'm not sure if West Covina had that in our code, but LA County and LA City had already requested that any new developer, they need to have a charging stations. I'm not sure if it's installed or just ready to be installed in terms of the meter size and the electricals and all that. And like you had mentioned earlier, we got in Title 24, when the time comes to development, they may require solar panel up there, which is not designed or drawn at this moment in time. So, I mean, that's... I also like to... We had regarding the AC, just around the perimeter on the north and then the west side, to see if you can look into having a quieter machine, you can say, with reference to the others, should be fine. Regarding the setback on Roland area, to see, we are making adjustments to the parking lot and arrangement of the building to see if we can line that up with the current house in the Roland area on that particular, the north side of that street. So, that's something that I like to see that in there. I'm not sure you had mentioned that you may not want to see gates. So, I... Because the proximity is so close to the commercial area, I think... I don't know if you can incorporate this to see if there's a gated, a little gated community, so, you know, people go in and out. Only the people who lives there can go in and out. And also to use the park as well to maintain that area. The clear story, what Commissioner Lewis had added, there are one more space to the north. I'm not sure which property it is, but to the north of the property, there are some that's overlooking into their yard, one of the neighborhood.
Yeah, no, I know exactly the two plans Mr. Lewis is referring to.
So, I would like to amend my motion to incorporate Commissioner Lewis's recommendations on top of the additional recommendation I made was the parking. And so, I would like to amend my motion to incorporate Commissioner Lewis's recommendations. And I think Mr. Lewis Company's commitment to commit to that. And so, I'll amend my motion to incorporate Commissioner Lewis's... Also incorporate Commissioner Lewis's recommendations. And if Commissioner Becerra still seconds it.
Do you have anything to add or a motion that you'd like to make?
No.
Oh, okay, all righty. We have a motion right now with the additions on it. And I also like to make a motion to add Gutierrez, Commissioner Lewis, and also with that I had mentioned regarding the AC noise just outside perimeter, and also to take into consideration regarding the setback on that one. Do I have a second for that? Because we have a second for Lewis. And do I have a second for the motions I just added combined Lewis?
Yeah, quick question. What do you mean regarding the setback? Just for clarification, so...
To see if that particular... Can you bring the setback plan up again? We cannot really see it. So, that particular plan, you see how the parking lot, we're moving it to the further north? So, that whole alignment, the setback to... You see how the... If you look at the west, the west existing resident right now, the setback is a little bit further in. So, I'd like to see if that community kind of blend in with that, the whole block.
But I think that's accessibility for fire trucks and stuff that they calculated.
Right now, there's a 15-foot setback to that smaller product, right? It's smaller than the existing product to the west. So, I mean, we'll take a look at that. I mean, we've really pushed and pulled. We've been more sensitive to maintaining, like I said, the perimeter privacy concerns rather than the front setbacks on a street like Roland there. But we'll take a look at that. I think it might be a challenge. I don't know specifically the setback of the adjacent unit there.
Okay.
Is there any way, staff? Do we know what the setback is? Does anyone know what that setback is?
The required setback for the R1 is 25 feet.
25 feet? And it's currently a 15-foot setback as proposed? 15 feet plus the four feet for Edison? It's 20 total or...
No, I think it's only 15, right?
It's only 15 from the right of way to the hill there, right? So, I'm just saying that it will be... I mean, you can see the vertical stack there of the units from north to south. I mean, it's going to be prohibitively challenging to find additional feet there. I mean, we have minimum standards for the hammerheads for the fire trucks and the width of those roads. There's just not anywhere to take any more space out on this site with respect to that. And we've tried to, like I said, we've done what we've done with the orientation of those units and including, you can see they're different, even with the townhome units to the far east. They've been oriented and treated so that they have the visual appearance of having a more orientation towards the street, like a typical single-family detached home. That's exactly what we've done all the way across that frontage. And we will do the same treatment with the modification that we're doing there in the parking area to be consistent. But, yeah, it'll just be... There's just not a lot of push and pull there on that west side to incorporate any additional setback on Roland for those three units. The other items are workable.
I mean, I'll say, I would prefer to have a 25-foot setback, but I think that that's... Given the confines of this, and quite frankly, you know, realistically, I think we can all agree that this is probably going to city council and everything anyway. You know, I think that that's something that I am hopeful that is addressed at that point in time, because I do think that that is something that would look preferable, in my opinion. But I think as a practical matter, it's with the confines of the current project, you know, unless you're eliminating units and you're telling me, hey, I'm happy to eliminate those back two units, you know, I doubt that that's going to happen. But I would certainly be on board with that if you did. In any case, yeah, I think that, just as a practical matter, I think it'd be difficult to do that with the current project.
Okay, so, motion, do we...
Do we have a second on my motion?
Chair Heng, I've been trying to connect with Commissioner Becerra, but no luck.
Oh, sorry, Renee, I have her here on my phone. So, Commissioner Becerra, there's a motion on the table by Gutierrez.
Is this... Are we talking about the same one prior? Because I couldn't hear.
Yes, the one he made prior with the amendments, proposed amendments by staff for the home assistance program. Moving the six-plex closer to Roland and moving the parking lot towards the back. The amendment to the housing program, the screening requirements on the north and eastern portion of the property, plants and trees that are sufficient maturity to provide screening when planted. CCNRs require trash bins to be removed within 24 hours, if not, being taken out, if not, be a fine. The housing program to include a preference for West Covina renters. Oh, there's two units that we want specific windows at a certain height for privacy, and then to include infrastructure, not necessarily the station for EV charging stations.
Okay, no, I do agree with the... With respect to the drainage problem, as long as moving the parking lot to the back, because that seems to be a big problem with that area right there. So, as long as it wouldn't affect fixing that whole issue there, then, yes, a second.
Okay. And just for your clarification, the developer did mention that he did speak with his engineer, and they're confident they can do that and still address the drainage.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. And Paulina?
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Becerra.
Aye.
Madam Chair Heng.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
She's... She has not...
I'm sorry, I haven't voted yet because the item line that I had asked them to take a look at has not been taken into consideration. So, I love the projects, but there are still a few items that we need to iron out. So, that would be a no.
So, can you... So, does the motion pass?
Yeah, it goes on. Sorry, yes, the motion passes 3-2. I think the motion passed. Commissioner Becerra.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, final action on this matter will be taken at a public hearing before the city council on date to be determined. Which, do we know the date yet? No, we don't know, right, Paulina?
No, at this time, no. We'll be scheduling it for the next available council meeting that will be ready to place on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Are we moving on to non-hearing items? We have any... We don't have any non-hearing item tonight, so we will move on to commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items. Would any of the commissioners like to make a report or comment? Anyone? If not, Paulina, community developer director's report. Paulina, do you have anything?
Okay, sorry. Now, I'm getting... I can hear Ms. Becerra on the phone. There will be a meeting, a planning commission meeting on April 13th with a public hearing for tentative tract map 74976 with a subdivision into two lots on Francisco. Conditional use permit number 21-20... 21-02 for a tutoring center on Azusa Avenue, and a code amendment number 20-08 and an amendment to the downtown plan. There are no items scheduled for the April 27, 2021, planning commission meeting.
April 21, we have no planning commission meeting?
April 27, 2021, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And since there is no further business to consider, this meeting is adjourned at 11:26? Thank you, everyone.